Please rise for a moment, flowers and this thing is really important.
United States of America, see the Republic always grand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank ma'am.
We'll see what.
Now, if you call the roll, please.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
We do have a quorum. Okay, and approval of minutes of our nine twenty-three meeting?
Yeah, I got it all.
Motion for approval? Motion? Second? Okay, any discussion on the minute? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. See your hands show that you have a receipt of our check register for the month? Thank you. Okay, we're a little bit out of line this evening. We have a special request from Chief Bruin that DB moved up on the agenda. He has some business he has to take care of tonight after council meeting.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate you.
It's his business.
Let me move up. The Scott County used basketball program decided to have basketball trials tonight, so...
You're trying out?
I gotta be there. No. I wouldn't make it. They cut me a long time ago.
They probably want to ask you for your birth certificate.
Yeah, but, so, I appreciate you letting me go first. I don't know if everybody got the letter, but we went to bid for the tower truck. I have included the bids here before and then the final bid. And the reason I say that, you know, a lot of times we do equipment and extra things on the truck to see where we end up and that's why the nine eighty-two from nine-one-one Fleet and Fire was the higher, but they included a lot of things that came with it. For example, laser spotters, aero stow, a front intake and dual monitors. That ended up being about twenty thousand dollars decrease. So, that's why the final bid is less, but we're here to ask for your approval for nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for the aero truck. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to ask.
An order approving a bid from nine-one-one Fleet and Fire Equipment for one ladder fire truck and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas the city of Georgetown issued an invitation to bid for one ladder fire truck and whereas nine-eleven Fleet and Fire Equipment submitted the lowest bid in the amount of nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the bid submitted by nine-one-one Fleet and Fire Equipment, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, is approved and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, chief, and I hope you make the strike.
I hope I do, too. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, now our public comment. Mr. Simpson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just here as the treasurer of the Festival of the Horse, and I'm here tonight to say thank you, starting with all of you. Thank you for the support that you've given us over the years in terms of the financial support, the in-kind support to help make the festival a reality. I did leave for each of you a handout that has a list of the organizing committee, a copy of an advertisement that we did for the festival, and then our balance sheet. And as of today, we've got about nine thousand left over. I figure we're going to end up the year with somewhere around five to six thousand left over seed money for next year. But I'm here tonight simply to say thank you to a whole lot of people. I'd like to thank our sponsors Toyota Motor Manufacturing, Kentucky, Republic Bank, Southern States, Steve Woodrum State Farm Insurance Agency, and the Georgetown Scott County Tourism Commission. I'm amazed with the way that people from across our community come together to put on what seems like a simple little street festival, but which is much more than that, I believe. It brings out our community in a very unique way. People come together in a way that you don't see any other time of year. It's a time where old friends greet each other. It's a time for kids to enjoy being the focus of a parade. It's a time to celebrate our equine past. It's a time for families to come together and have good wholesome fun. It's a time for funnel cakes, corn dogs, and carnival rides. It's all that and more. At the core of the festival is a small group of volunteers who have fun working together. It is a team effort that is driven by the desire to do something good for our community. And I'd like to quickly read these names. Peggy Angel, Jeff Blackburn, Frank Chisley, Officer Randy Garrison, Laura Green, Vicki Hadley, James Keppi, Jane Lay, Robert Millward, Bonnie Newville, David and Lori Razor, Lori Saunders, Gretchen Swords, Susan Smith, Maggie Stone, Martha Terlia, Mike Utley, Reenie Warren, and Lieutenant Jason Whitaker. I'd also like to additionally thank several other entities. The Scott County High School ROTC for helping with our barricades on Friday morning. Four students from Georgetown College, JT, Buckley, Alexis, and Maggie came out and helped us that morning as well. Old Friends Retirement Farm for thoroughbred horses, Scott County Arts and Cultural Festival or Center, the Georgetown Police Department. Thank you very much. We couldn't do it without those, the support that we get from them. The Scott County Sheriff's Office, Georgetown Fire Department, the Georgetown Scott County Emergency Management Agency, the Georgetown Scott County Emergency Medical Services, and last but very much not least, our Public Works Department. These men do an incredible job, and I'm very proud of the work that they do for our community. I know that the festival is not popular with everyone and it inconveniences many over the course of its four days. That said, I believe that a large percentage of the residents of Georgetown and Scott County enjoy the tradition which the festival represents. If I've missed anybody tonight or any organization, please accept my apologies. When you do a list like this, you always run the risk of missing somebody, and I hope I didn't do that. I'm very proud of what we've done with the festival. I hope that you're proud as well, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
I really hate to see Saturday night wiped out, but certainly think that it was the right decision.
Thank you, Mayor.
No doubt about it.
Nobody was more disappointed than myself and the other organizers, because we've spent literally months organizing. No one knows how much time and effort goes into organizing this simple little festival, but it's not nearly as simple as it looks. But we were, I appreciate your comment. We were, we did what we felt was in the best interest of the human safety of all the people.
Thank you, sir.
Wait, did I get out of here in four minutes?
Yes.
We're out of road, everything down. That way I didn't have to hold it down.
And thank you, John, to what you did for the residents as far as communicating and sharing packets on cars and people downtown as well. We were able to share that with others.
Try to help our game a little bit on the end. Anytime there's comments, the community would like us to come back and talk more about the festival. The tourism commission has talked about having a, having some kind of a community forum to discuss the future of the festival and other street closure matters. As Mayor knows, we had a couple unhappy people and don't want anybody to be unhappy, but sometimes, as I said, it does inconvenience people when you do events downtown like this. But you'll let me know. It's really your call.
Thank you, John. Mr. Tack.
Good evening. I'm here regarding a news graphic article, September twenty-sixth, proposal would extend alcohol sales on Sunday. That's why I'm here. A constant continuation of wrong. Extending alcohol sales on Sunday to accommodate those who need to drink alcohol to enjoy the NFL and to please the restaurant owners so that they may continue the financial gain from folks drinking alcohol is sort of expected from this council. May I say this isn't just about football crowd, as these hours will not be resented because then you'll have the basketball crowd. You'll have to have alcohol for both crowds, otherwise it would be discriminating one sport against the other, and you can't have that. It's all about going forward with what is wrong versus what is right. The wrong is always easier than the right. Previously, there was no alcohol sales on Sunday, then that was lifted at least for some hours. Now we want to take it further. Isn't that how wrong always works? Never satisfied? Why not keep bars open twenty-four seven? What's the big deal? So what if Sunday is the Lord's day? Now, wait a minute. It's just the Lord's hour when I go to church on that day. It's really Alcohol Sunday, which is no different from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The police don't want the hassle of folks getting angry with them limiting what they drink, according to the paper. Even if there's an arrest for disorderly conduct, criminal, the criminal can get out of jail in just hours. I guess the police officer thinks, what's the use? Sorry now. Councilwoman Tackett wanted Sunday sales of alcohol, and she got it. She wants extended hours for drinking. She'll have that, too. What a proud and honorable moment. According to what was written in the paper, a woman raised a stink at Galvance because she was asked for her ID, but she left it at home. She wanted a glass of wine, and I guess she couldn't have the wine, or perhaps she did. I don't know, and I don't really care. What was, was really, was there really such a woman? Did she really look to be under thirty though she was sixty-six? The point is, she raised a stink, and now change is coming. I've made a stink about alcohol sales on Sunday since two thousand and nine, and no one listened to me. Instead, you voted the opposite of what I desired. Do you think domestic violence cases or aggravated assault cases and the number of folks who have been drinking when these crimes and violations are committed? Do you ever have any guilt regarding a death or injury by a drunk driver? Do you ever say to yourself how silly or stupid it seems for gas stations? Figure it out. For gas stations to sell alcohol when the driver is not supposed to drink while, drink alcohol while driving? Oh, never mind. Folks who buy alcohol and just drink, they just drink at home or in the restaurant. And when they leave these establishments, of course, they're sober once they get in the car. How silly of me to even talk to you about this. You don't care, but you do care about the dollar, that almighty dollar, the god of this world. If you think the financial gain is a benefit to this community after deaths and injuries have occurred, then I would have to question your integrity. I know the pressure of wanting to say all is good, but it's not good. There comes a time when reality and morality should hold hands. At this point, neither has the upper hand. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Shindler?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Tim Schindler. I'm one of the associate pastors at Georgetown Baptist Church, and we have an upcoming event on Wednesday, October thirtieth. It's our annual trunk retreat event for our neighborhood, our community, and we're requesting road closure for the section of South Hamilton Street between College and Clinton Street. This is something that we've requested in the past and has been granted, and we would appreciate, again, it's going to be the, between the hours of six-thirty and seven-thirty. So if we could have the road closed probably about six o'clock and until seven-thirty, we would appreciate that very much.
I'm sorry. It's the same one that they always do?
Well, is this on Halloween night or on?
No, this is Wednesday, the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, okay. Thirty. Go ahead.
From six-thirty to seven-thirty?
Yeah. Yeah, we'd like it to be closed about six o'clock.
Six, yeah. I'll make a motion, ma'am.
Motion by Miss Tackett?
Second.
Second by Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Have a good time.
Have a good candy.
Reese's.
Butterfinger.
Okay, the fire department has a request for a road closure for a parade.
We know what it is. You want to go make the motion?
Sorry about that. I was asking Chief Ward if he was wanting to do it. Thursday, Thursday evening, from six to eight o'clock, I believe, for the fire prevention parade. Do they need to tell the streets or?
Any particular Thursday?
Seventeenth.
Same street as usual?
This seventeenth. Yeah, same street as usual. Military.
Starnick Harley.
Starnick Harley. Lemons Mill, military. Main Street, Broadway, Clayton.
This is a good outing.
You got somebody filing that with the state?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, they know all the necessary steps need to be taken. Mr. Pinn, second by Miss Tackett. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Have another good.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor's comments. Our downtown Spooktacular will be held on the thirty-first between the hours of one and four, and if it's like all the previous years, we'll have children all over the streets. Great outing. And then Halloween will be observed on the thirty-first between the hours of six and eight P.M. Also, on the twenty-seventh, I want to make that this announcement now, Thriller will be on Main Street between the hours of seven and nine, and that's always a huge turnout downtown. Also, this morning, I had the pleasure of swearing in new police officer Brandon Vest was sworn in this morning, and we certainly welcome him to our force.
And?
Is he headed to the academy or comes to us from another?
He's headed to the academy. He is. I have a proclamation for SCAD that I'll be signing tomorrow with the judge and his office. You want to read that, ma'am?
Joint proclamation, Office of the Mayor and the Judge Executive, whereas the Scott County Ends Against Drugs Incorporated, SCAD, has celebrated National Red Ribbon Week since the beginning of nineteen eighty-eight, and whereas the red ribbon has touched the lives of millions of people around the world, the event marks the anniversary of the death of Enrique Camarena, the drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered by drug traffickers in Mexico, and whereas Enrique spent his life dedicated to making a visible effort to eradicate illegal drugs from our communities in response to his death, angered parents and communities across the country began wearing red ribbons as a symbol of their commitment to raise awareness of the killing and destruction caused by drugs in America. And whereas today, the red ribbon is worn to symbolize Enrique's belief that one person can make a difference and that together we can give the greatest gift to the future of our community, drug-free youth. Therefore, let it be known that we, George Lesby Scott County Judge Exec and Everett Varney, Mayor of the City of Georgetown, do hereby proclaim October twenty-third through the thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, as National Red Ribbon Celebration Week and urge everyone to join with SCAD, the Scott County School System, and the community in nurturing the full potential of all youth. Wear a red ribbon to celebrate health, drug-free lifestyles, and to remember a person who in life and death made a difference in the fight for drug-free communities.
Thank you. Okay, next item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we, did we in the past vote to close the street for Thriller? We've already done.
It's already gave permission.
That date was on the, what date did you say was going to be?
It's on the twenty-seventh.
Thanks.
Seven to nine. Okay, the little lane proposal that was sent out to everyone. Andrew? We asked for feedback and we didn't get any, so I'm assuming that you did entertain, that this was a good proposal. Glad to have you here with us tonight. Thank you.
We've got Mr. Hamel here. We've got folks from planning and zoning. Really, it's just time for the council to ask whatever questions they feel are appropriate or like whatever motions they feel are appropriate.
Yes, I can, I've got the proposal here and a layout. I apologize, I did not have it attached to the, you guys have the copy?
Please.
I highlighted the route that the pipe that we're proposing to install, which would go, simply, as you all know, looking, looking for just kind of a shared, shared partnership that Dominion would contribute, the city would contribute to help resolve the issue.
Mayor, I'll make a quick comment. And I think I replied back to the original email that came from City Hall that, you know, I was, I was pleased with the proposal. I was pleased with the pricing and, and now looking at the design, I mean, it looks, you know, as discussed, as in terms of one of the options. And in the past, over the many years, we've done, we've done a lot of stormwater improvements, a lot of projects, and most of them have been on our own. And we probably haven't had the opportunity to partner with, with the private sector and solve a problem like we're faced here with tonight, and I guess we have been over the past seven years. And there, there have been a lot of projects that we've done. And I was, I was telling Connie earlier today, and Karen knows this, many of you know this, Marvin certainly, and Mark, Kelly, all of you know this.
Okay, okay.
Brad, everybody. With the last few years, we haven't had money in our budget to take care of stormwater problems. So it's not been something that we've been faced with over the past five to seven years like we were faced with, at least for my first several years and certainly your first term on council, we were, we were constantly doing stormwater projects. Some small in scale, some more medium, and some very extensive and very, very large. And from my perspective, reflecting back on everything that, that we've been involved with over the years, this seems extremely reasonable to me. It takes care of a problem that's, that's obviously, I guess, been there, as Brad says, for probably about seven years, and we've got a corporate partner that's, that's willing to help us with it. And you know what? I mean, maybe a finger can be pointed somewhere and some blame can be put on someone, but, you know, things like this do happen.
We don't need to go in that direction.
And I don't think we need to either, Mayor.
We need to take care of, we have an opportunity right now and...
Yeah, I just don't, I don't think, I mean, the issue is significant and it's big, but the money to resolve it, in my mind, is, is not that big by comparison. So I would certainly make a motion that we, we partner with Dominion and split the cost.
I don't mind seconding that emotion, that emotion.
That emotion?
But I do have a couple questions.
Sure.
On the, what is the proposal that is given, is down underneath when it says to obtain easements from private property owners, would that be something you would do, Andrew? To get the easements or prepare them? And how many property owners are we looking at? When I'm looking at this plaque?
It's three property owners. Had that discussion earlier with Earl, and I would probably partner with them, because they have a little more expertise in that area, but, I mean, essentially, yes, we would have to purchase easements from three property owners.
So that's not included the twelve thousand?
It is not.
It is not.
But is one of the property owners Dominion?
I don't know.
We would. Okay, but I'm, what I was getting at, are there? Because we need an easement from them as well, right? Or is there already an existing easement?
I'm assuming that they would willingly agree and give us the...
Yeah, I've already put the easement on the final plaque, so...
So you're the property owner then?
What's that? Well, for Dominion, yes. I mean, but there are three others.
There's three others, okay. So that price does not include that, and we don't know what that cost is going to be, correct?
We don't. We were sort of discussing how we would go about determining what that is, and basically you have to have a phrase in order to determine, and there, as I understand, Earl was emailing me about it earlier, there are various approaches to how you value, you know, what an easement costs.
Okay, I understand. And I get that. And then the second thing I wanted to ask, when it says that, that it does not include the filling or grading work, so is that something else that will have to incur after it's all said and done?
I don't know the answer to that question.
And does, is that, is that a huge cost, or do you have kind of an idea?
The, the problem there is that, that we're extending a pipe, and typically when you do grading improvements, it, it's both extending a pipe and then also grading the ground to, to the pipe. We, we have our portion that we control, but then there are multiple property owners that we have no desire to get on all of those property owners and do grade work because it opens us up for a lot of exposure.
Okay.
Number one, and number two, it really is about the exposure and, and people's expectations of, hey, you were on my property and my grass isn't the way it was before you started, and so we, we felt like that's just something that... was before you started, and so, we, we felt like that's just something that we weren't wanting to get into. Plus, we would have to obtain easements from all those folks as well, so...
Okay. So, then I'm, the clarity that I'm collecting on this is that to just put the pipe in, we're looking at $12,097 Dominion and City Hall, City. And then, I'm going to assume that P&amp;Z is going to take on the responsibility with Andrew to do the easements, and then P&amp;Z is going to see to it that the grading and stuff is going to be done as well, and come back to us with costs on that. Is that correct?
Well, the one thing I, I think if, the way I interpret this is that there would be grading done, but it would...
Only a portion?
Just where the pipe's been done.
Just, just where, just where needed, I guess.
Yes.
But he's not going to go over on the other three pieces of property with the grading once the pipe's done, correct?
Well, once the pipe goes in, they'll have to, they'll backfill it and...
There'll be some.
Yeah, I guess what, to try to clarify this, um, so, so I'm, I'm, we're stubbing the pipe out to a certain point. The, the issue is, is coming downstream, and it's, and it's got to get to that pipe. When there's a heavy rain event, it's all going to find its way to the pipe, but there might be, you know, one spot that's two inches lower, or another spot over here that's a little lower, that may not get to that pipe, that will puddle there for just a little bit. And, and so, those kind of problems are resolved if you smooth out the ground and kind of funnel all the water to the pipe. What I'm saying is, we don't have a desire to get on to all of those rear properties and funnel that water to the pipe. Water, the main thrust of the water's going to make it to the pipe. But I'm saying it's, it's like, uh, trying to, trying to paint a picture here in words. There'll be, there'll be spots, because it's existing ground, that, that will hold a little bit of water. It's not going to be like the pictures that you saw.
But those are not going to be able to be addressed until it rains, or we actually see the puddles, or see whether that's going to happen?
It would be up to those individual property owners to kind of, you know, do a little bit of grade work on their own to help channel water towards that pipe.
Okay. All right.
And really, the city couldn't do it either without easements, so...
You could go on, probably, the property.
All we're going to do is obtain easements to put the pipe in?
Correct.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure I understand.
This, this will...
I just, I was just saying, that's okay. I just want to make sure I understood.
This solution will, uh, prevent and help resolve those pictures that you saw. I mean, that, that water was 18 inches deep, it was probably standing in that low spot for 24, 48 hours. It's going to help take, you know, the lion's share of that water away.
But you're still going to have, you're still kind of anticipating issues afterwards though, aren't you?
I am, because if, if you're doing a, a complete 100%, if you just, if you just had a clean slate, you know, and you didn't have any of the, the burdens of chasing easements from those rear properties, you would put the pipe in, and you would grade all of that to that pipe, and you wouldn't have a low spot here or anything like that, because you've, you have a clean slate that you're working on, but, and, and we don't have, you know, we have all of those property owners that, again, I'm... We're already going to have a difficult time chasing easements as it is, so...
So, this is not a solution to the complete problem, this is a help to the problem?
It is, and what I'm trying to do is set the right expectation of, you know, we put this pipe in, and somebody says, well, I've got, you know, an area the size of this desktop here that's holding water, two inches of water, and you put the pipe in, what about this spot right here? And, and that's what I'm saying, is that they may have to do some things on their own to help that situation.
And but part of the thing is, when we talked, when we talked before on those pictures, when we had the pictures, which you pointed out to me that I didn't, you know, clearly know, and I don't think some of the homeowners knew, that that water, that, a bulk of that water was actually over what was already on your all's property anyway. We talked about that, how small their backyards really were, and so much of that water, the deepest part of it was actually over on, would've been Dominion's property.
That's right.
So, is the deepest part of the part where you're saying it probably would still puddle, would that not still be on your all's side anyway?
Well, uh, no, because we, we had not, at the time, done all of the site work that is shown on that plan. So, now, you know, the, the way that our property now looks, it tapers right over to the property line.
Okay.
So, now, I, I don't know what happened on this last, I was out of town over the weekend, I mean...
Glad you asked.
I, I don't know what happened during that event.
Well, um, I actually got a phone call, talked to the property owner that, um, that the lady, Kathy, that's been here several times, the whole time, where it hadn't really gotten in her yard as much as it had everyone else's, and she's kind of at the higher, but it got in her yard Saturday, and she said it was from the moving of what you guys were doing up there at the top. And that was one of the questions I was going to ask you, because you're still moving dirt and everything.
We are.
How close are you all to be having that finished?
It is a multifaceted solution, so, so right now, we have a yard drain that we had put into the design on the second approval. That yard drain is now starting to take water to it, so that's, that's a good thing.
Okay.
The next thing that needs to happen is the asphalt and the curbs need to go down, which they're, if, if the rain doesn't stop us, we will have asphalt down, I believe, by end of next week.
Okay.
That's the other main part of channeling that water away from that area. It, it will help prevent some of that volume from heading in that direction. So, each step will start to improve. I don't, I don't know how much rain we got here.
About four.
Saturday was a lot. Four inches?
And it... I asked the guys, I didn't, I didn't get a, a report that it was as deep as it was before, or that, you know...
I had, I had Kyle and Earl go up and take a look at it the day after the rain stopped, and they said there was water there, but it didn't seem to be nearly the amount of water that the pictures showed us previously.
Okay.
And that the, the work you had done seemed to, to help.
Okay.
And all it needs is a little time.
Was that on Monday that they went up there, or was it? Was it Sunday after the festival? It was Monday. So, we'd already had time, by that time, it had already gone 24 hours plus to get into the ground.
That's possible, too.
In 24 hours, I mean, just look at our warranty book, for instance. When we, when we set the expectation to a customer, 24 hours is kind of the window we say, hey, you know, if, if water dissipates in a 24-hour period, that's a pretty good standard right there, you know? So...
But what he just said, if I understood what the mayor said, that it was 24 hours late, it was 24 hours after the rain had stopped, and there wasn't as much as what was in the picture, but that means there was still water there? Is that right?
There's still water there, yes.
Okay.
So, then the pipe would be the, the, again, multifaceted solution. It'll be one of the, one of the measures that will help overall, so...
Have you considered rock? Getting rock? Our price is still going to be 10,000, I mean, 12,000? If you hit a bunch of rock, are we...
From our standpoint, um, I think we'll just...
Eat it?
Eat that on our, our side. We're, we're already eating engineering costs.
Right.
I thought I had a...
Because a lot of times you put in, you put in a contingency, rock, you know, so and so much an hour, whatever.
They, they do, they, they say, of course, that there is no, no way to really get in there and do the exploration of finding out if there's rock. So, these guys have contingency of, if we hit rock, it's going to be additional cost. I don't anticipate, because we're, we're pretty shallow, so... But if we do, that'll be something that we just take on the...
Where would this come out of? Would this come out of the planning and zoning budget, or would this come out of stormwater?
Well, um, as far as budget goes, I can certainly, Kyle and I can review his stormwater budget to see if there's anywhere we could take it from there.
We, you know, we're in a deficit budget.
I'm sorry?
We're still, we're still in a deficit budget, and we projected an account of, or something like that, deficit for this year, like 230, so I mean, that's...
I don't think we were that far, no. I think we had a...
Were we breaking, or were we break even?
I think we broke even, except for a couple of prior year expenses that we brought forward, such as, yeah, just a couple of things.
But I mean, we're still at least a break even, so we'd have to find a particular place to pay for it, whether it's planning and zoning.
If we didn't find it in stormwater, then I would look to the prior year funds. I might suggest, too, that we might look at, uh, planning and zoning's budget as well. That's our choice, so...
Okay, Connie, are you seconding?
Yes, sir.
David's?
Hey, Mayor, I want to ask a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
I know we've got a couple of engineers in the room, Kyle and Brent. Obviously Strand designed this plan, and I'm sure they did it to the utmost standards, but you all have had a chance to look at the plan as well, and feel confident in recommending approval to the council with what's been presented?
Well, um, I believe Brent's reviewed it a little bit more than I have, but, you know, it's pretty common sense. It's pretty standard. Brent could probably talk a little bit more about the actual flow volume.
Well, uh, actually, um, I don't know if Strand is 100% finished, um, with their calculations. The, the last time they gave me information, it was the planning profile, and, uh, he had a fairly good idea of how much head there would be behind the pipe, but he was going to, uh, do a little more in-depth calculations to, to verify that. So, I've not seen those. I, I am anticipating that this still has to come back to me for final approval.
Why don't we make that contingent on approval through at least Brent Combs or Planning and Zoning, or Kyle, or whomever?
Because it seems like we're vote, we're, we're asked to vote on something that we're, that Planning and Zoning hasn't really signed off on yet?
Well, I, the, the plan is good, I'm just saying I don't have the, the final, um, probably the only thing that, uh, that I'm not 100% sure of is how deep the water is going to be in the pipe during a particular storm event.
And that would, that would help, that would determine how much water flows off their yard into that, away from...
That, that would determine, um, yeah, what, what, how much water is going to show, you know, for the first hour or so after a rain.
Because I'm, I'm...
It's not a long-term thing, but it, it does give me some information on the short-term.
Because I'm supportive in, in helping one Dominion move on with what they need to do, as well as the residents to, to do what they need, but I'm also feeling a little bit from Mark that Mark is being honest, and saying that he's not sure, he's not guaranteeing that this is going to take care of every problem that's been presented to us, but flip aside, the other thing I'm hearing is Planning and Zoning hasn't totally 100% signed off on this, and then the third thing is, where is the City of Georgetown? Which avenue are we going to have it paid for? So, there's three issues still kind of hanging out there that I'd like to have just a little bit more comfort on, so are we not quite ready to, to vote on this tonight?
Well, I'm okay voting with it, I just want Brent Combs or someone, Kyle, to sign off on it when the plan is finalized.
Yeah, let's add that to the motion.
I mean, you know, in, in, in concept, it looks fine, but I understand there's details that, that need to be approved.
Are you going to make amendment then to your motion?
I'll make an amendment to the motion, if, if that's what's needed.
And I, a comment's been made earlier that it's important we don't try to, you know, point fingers or blame people, but at the same time, you know, we've had a lengthy discussion about this on multiple council meetings, and we've talked about, while there wasn't one individual person at fault, there was probably more we could do as plan, as a council, more Planning and Zoning could do as an agency. And that's kind of the reason why I feel this needs to come out of either Planning and Zoning's budget, or it's the stormwater budget, for the simple reason that it just can't just come out of the surplus of the largest of the city. I mean, this is a planning and zoning problem, and it's one of those things that I think should be taken care of within Planning and Zoning, and if there's not money there, then we need to look at doing it out of stormwater, but not making some sort of extra budget amendment or borrowing out of some other fund. So, to me, that's, that would be the main hang-up for me for voting for this, is that the notion that it would just come out of, you know, out of a general fund somewhere.
Mark?
I'm sorry.
There's a first and a second on the table, correct?
There is.
But the first and the second, I get, and Mark kind of beat me to the punch there, I mean, I'm... I know Mr. Varney, you and Mr. Lesby said, you know, we don't want to, let's, let's get beyond placing blame, but at the same time, I mean, I, I, I think this ought to come directly out of P&amp;Z's budget. Uh, so if we're going to make a, a motion and a second to vote on the city spending the money, then I'm going to vote no. Now, if we're willing to make an, an adjustment on that, that the, this is going to come out of the P&amp;Z budget, then obviously, then I'll make, now, obviously, I know, I don't know if I can make that motion now, since we've already got another motion and a second on the table, but...
You can amend his motion.
If we make the amendment to... I, I firmly believe that this ought to come out of the P&amp;Z budget, without any hesitation.
May I ask why, Mark? I'm just curious, what, what was the error that we've done to...
And again, I, you know, as I stated at our last council meeting, and I think there's been multiple missed opportunities here along the way.
But all on P&amp;Z?
I'm sorry?
Just on P&amp;Z?
No, I think there's been multiple missed opportunities, uh, and this goes back years. It doesn't just start at six or seven months ago, I think it goes back years. And I just, I believe what I believe, and I, I think it ought to come out of your budget.
I, I, I don't mind amending my, the motion to make sure that you guys sign off on it. I'm not so sure that I want to tackle on it coming out of your budget. I do agree that Planning and Zoning should, some of it, but I also know that it, Planning and Zoning is an interlocal agreement, and it's something I think that we could take back to our interlocal task force and talk to the county as well. So, I think there's some avenues that we can look at, but we can all sit down and do that later, I think. Right now, I think Karen and David is right, as far as it goes, is that you've not signed off on this particular, because you don't have all of your information, that I just want to add that part to our, our, uh, voting on it to move forward. Because at the end of the day, the homeowners should not have to suffer any longer, so we need to make something happen, and we can address the budget at a later time. That's my take on this, but I don't think that we should hold it up for...
Well, the problem needs to be taken care of.
Yes.
As you said, citizens out there have put up with this long enough, and if this is something that's going to take care of it, then I think we need to move on it.
So, your first, your motion is to move on it?
Is to proceed, but I don't mind amending it, and I think we should, to let Planning and Zoning sign off on the final plan.
And I'll second that with the amendment.
Any other comments?
I think we still need to keep looking at stormwater, see if they got any money in their budget, also.
Absolutely. We can look at all avenues.
Not just go it one way.
Right.
Stacy, you'll take a look at that.
Uh, Kyle, stormwater, stormwater budget. Isn't that more about, that budget line, isn't that more about addressing stormwater issues, um, for developments that maybe went in before Planning and zoning was, Planning and zoning was, was existent in 19, I think, 73? I mean, isn't it more, we're talking about, you know, the flooding down there on the corner of Clayton and South Broadway, things like that? I mean, in areas that, in areas that's, in areas that were developed before stormwater was really thought about or contemplated when, when a house went up?
Most of the funds regarded relating to our MS-4 permit and our requirements that we have to do every year, um, some of it's for professional services, for design services, for capital projects such as that. But, I mean, like, I have no problem looking at my budget to see if there's something I can find.
But newer developments already, do they already conform to MS-4?
I mean, typically, you know, they're put into a higher standard, as our standards update over the decades.
We have done improvements in newer subdivisions, like Armstrong.
And Mount Vernon, but I mean, I don't know if even that was up to the level of MS-4, that was a subdivision that went in late 70s, early 80s. I don't know, to me, it seems like it would work better to take it out of Planning and Zoning rather than stormwater, but...
Ideally, anything stormwater should be funded out of the stormwater fund, but, but right now, Public Works does a lot of activities that...
Ideally, anything Stormwater should be funded out of the Stormwater Fund, but right now, Public Works does a lot of activities that are- that they fund that are Stormwater. Plan and Zoning does a lot of Stormwater activities that should be funded out of Stormwater, but they're not, so hopefully we can change that.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen? Mr. Penn? Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
I'm gonna vote yes, but, uh, I don't think this is the final solution to this, and I do think it should come out of Planning and Zoning's budget. Okay.
Mr. Singer?
No.
Mr. Showalter?
No.
I have four yeses, two no's, and an extension and pass.
No, we got four yeses.
One, two, three, yeah, four yeses.
Okay, I thought you said three.
Four yeses, a pass, an extension.
Can I ask a question or can I ask Earl one quick question? This is just because I've been thinking, um, with the situation coming up and how a subdivision gets a plat approval and then they're four or five years down the road because they do it in phases. And because that, um, was given to them, or it doesn't matter whether it's Dominion or anybody, I'll just say in general, is there anything or some kind of stipulation that can be put in there that if it's five years or four years before they get to that phase that you could go back and reevaluate for issues like this that, you know, that wouldn't come back and get us? I'm just wondering if that's something that could be looked at, whereas they might would have to change their- their, uh, plat if it- if- because if somebody else builds before someone else and you have those homes there, or even if they're home- people that they're connected to and it affects them, is there something that could be looked at?
Not typically, um, typically when a plat is recorded, there is a bond or a letter of credit for a hundred twenty-five percent of all the improvements, and that's hard improvements in the ground, final surface of pavement, sidewalk, street lights. Um, it's really, there is no such thing as a performance bond on a subdivision, so you really can't hold on to, um, security for many years out. It- once it's been engineered and designed and constructed as per the plans, it's completed and it's done.
And when it goes final plat and it's recorded, it's a final plat?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, there will be-
You can only go back and do amendments?
Right.
With everybody being in agreement.
What- what- what I was gonna, uh, interject here is that the Planning Commission is in discussions about, uh, putting in a sunset clause, and- and what that is, is that if you get preliminary approval but haven't started construction over- after a certain period of time, whatever time you select, that preliminary is taken away and then they have to come back in for a- for a new approval. And so that kind of would address what you're talking about.
Yeah, so then, so when a- a subdivision comes to you and they have three phases, you would give them a final plat on the first phase, a preliminary on second and third. Can you do that?
Well, they typically, what's happened over the years, it's gonna continue with some of the other new ordinances that we have, but, uh, in the past, you would get a preliminary if you have a large piece of property, you get preliminary approval on the whole thing. That gives the developer some- some confidence and assurances of what- of what they can do. And then they might come in with a final approval just on, like you said, just different phases. Uh, once that final approval is- is given, there's nothing, uh, currently that would- that would take that away, but, uh, and- and right now, there's nothing even on the preliminary. We have some preliminaries that are maybe ten or fifteen-year-old, and if they came in right now to get a final approval, we could make sure that their final plans meet the current standards, but you couldn't actually just take it off the table. So a sunset clause goes one step further than that and actually removes that preliminary approval even, and makes them come back and start from scratch pretty much.
Another protect- yeah, I see what you're saying.
So there's some discuss- that's not done yet, but there's some discussion on it.
Sounds like we were kinda on the same page thinking those things, so yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, city attorney and city clerk, first item we have is approval and ordinance appointing a city clerk position. This is sponsored by Mr. Penn and Mr. Thompson. What this pertains to is exactly what it says, nothing else involved except whether you're voting to make this an appointed position instead of an elected position or leave it as it is. As- as far as the job description and the salary scale, that can be handled later. All this is pertaining to is changing the position, whether you want to do that or not.
Mayor, is it a matter of protocol that we need to vote to take it off the table or a thing that has been over thirty minutes?
It's had two readings, all we need to do is vote this evening.
So you don't have to read it again?
You would need two new motions, but it's already been read twice, so. Or a motion and a second is what I mean.
How many, what is the- what is the deadline as far as, is that the primary election?
The statute says general election, I think it's two-hundred-and-forty days.
Two-hundred-and-forty days before the general election.
Yeah, it actually says, it does say general election, yeah, general.
And just to make this clear, this doesn't take effect until?
Fifteen.
January one, twenty fifteen.
Yes.
A motion and a second. Make the motion. Second. Mayor, will we have a, um, input on the salary?
Absolutely, you- you have to set that. Just like you do on all the other positions.
And will you explain to the council how they set that, so for clarification?
Are you asking me or?
No, I'm asking the mayor. No, not you.
Don't ask me, I don't know what you're asking.
Asking the mayor. I mean, I have the exact process down because I haven't been here through that, but you do have a salary scale with different grades. Uh, we will also do this as part of the budget process this spring. Um, as you know, we set, um, you see those individual pages with individual positions' salaries, uh, during the budget process. This new salary would not take effect until January first, two thousand and fifteen, so during the fourteen, fifteen fiscal year, you would have half a salary at the elected rate and then half at whatever you choose to set that, but you would use that establishing your- your scale and everything, of course, you would have the opportunity to establish an appointed job description and attach that to a pay grade as well.
Stacy, I apologize, could you say it one more time? Did you say that the- the pay- the pay increase would not take effect, did you say until January of two thousand?
Yes, January first, two thousand and fifteen, so it would need to be addressed during the fourteen, fifteen budget cycle.
Okay.
That's because you cannot change the salary until it becomes an appointed position.
I guess a follow-up question, maybe Andrea might be one for you really, I mean, um, as it relates to an elected official like- like our city clerk is currently, can the council go in arbitrarily and make an adjustment to the salary if they take on additional job responsibilities like that?
An elected official?
Yeah.
No, I researched the issue, um, and you can't unfortunately.
So even if we wanted to- to give a pay increase, we couldn't- we couldn't do that?
Yeah, I- I looked at that- I looked at that pretty thoroughly because that argument has advanced a lot, but in- in this case, I actually found a case that specifically dealt with the city clerk's office. And it said, if the council were to oppose additional duties by ordinance, then it would be considered duties of that office, not entitled to additional. Now, if for instance, the county or the city clerk was to also be a road worker, which in some cities, it's- it's- it's reality.
Right.
Um, then the- the person could be entitled to two, um, paychecks, you know, for two different jobs, but simply adding additional duties to the job of city clerk would not entitle the city clerk to additional pay. It would have to be something that would be essentially completely separate and unrelated to the office of city clerk, not contemplated by the office of city clerk.
And then hypothetically, the city clerk, whether it's Tracy or anyone else, they don't have to accept those responsibilities associated with the- the alcohol revenue and the ordinance that pained to that.
That's a- that's a- that's a good question. I think, I'll give you a qualified answer, I think if there are duties on the book for clerk in- by ordinance and a clerk runs for that office and is elected, I think that it would be hard for a council to impose those duties, additional duties on that particular elected clerk. Because it would be a- it would be a fairness issue.
Right.
But for future clerks, they would be bound to do whatever duties the council has assigned that by ordinance.
So it's- it's, those are set by the- the council, not necessarily by the state, they're not parameters.
Correct, because the state statute says that the city can assign additional duties to the clerk by ordinance.
Okay. You know, um, you know, I know this is- this is- this issue's been obviously battered around quite a bit, it's top- been talked about for years, and- and quite honestly, I've- I've never supported taking it to that next level to where it's- where it's appointed, I've always wanted to keep it as an elected position. To me though, the circumstances have changed, the job description has certainly changed, it's certainly changed since the last election rather dramatically. And with- with all those changes and the additional responsibilities that go with it, um, I'm receptive towards taking it to an appointed position. Especially with the fact that we as a council can't just say, well, you know, this job i- is far more cumbersome now than it was twelve months ago, and we- we can't just give a raise. And, um, you know, our hands are somewhat tied even if we wanted to do that. And to me, that- that gives more credibility to- to going on and making it an appointed position. The other thing that I would say is, you know, whether we like it or not, you know, the income for that position has been talked about quite a bit, uh, whether it be in the newspaper or whatever the case may be. And the council, and you confirmed this, and I guess Stacy confirmed it, is- is this- this body will set the- the pay grade, and- and it's totally the authority of this council to do that. And I know there have been some rather high numbers that have been mentioned out there, and, um, uh, from my perspective, I don't- I don't think that that's- those are accurate, and I- and I don't think Ms. Hoffman was, uh, was asking for those or expecting those, but I think something far- far more reasonable than- than where it is right now is doable and justifiable. And I just kinda wanted to throw that out and mention where I'm coming from, cause it's- it's not been an easy issue, and I'm- I'm changing my position on it because of those factors that I've just mentioned. And, you know, my record in the past shows that I wanted to keep it as an elected position, I wanted to give it to the people and let them decide, but there have been a lot of changes, and with those, to me, they're justifiable.
You know, I've got the opposite view of what David has on it, I think it needs to stay in an appointed position. And when it first came to us, it came to us differently until and then, because in my opinion, it's more about need of a higher salary than it is about the service to the citizens. And the clerk has taken on some response- some extra responsibilities, when Sue was here, she did quite a few responsibilities, and when you run for the office, you kinda know what's involved with it, that it's this pay, that yes, there are benefits, and yes, there's retirement and that kind of stuff, so you know that when you take it on. And if you've taken on extra responsibilities to go along with that, well, you took on extra responsibilities with it. And I do have a question for the mayor, cause I did ask him this upstairs earlier, why did the ABC go under the city clerk and did the council do that? Did they change a job description to put that under there?
Done by ordinance.
Was it done by ordinance? Okay, and was there not some type of a- a at least, now when Mark and I weren't on the council, but was there not sometime at least an ordinance passed by the council to make sure that the automatic pay raises came from this point forward, that the cost of living increases?
I would have to revisit that, Karen, I'm not sure. That was back when, uh-
Okay, well, you know, I- I really think in about, if the money wasn't the biggest issue that's driving this behind this, it's not the service to the people, it's the money, then to come out with a grade eleven, uh, as the grade, which David says, you know, you mark, but the beginning salary of that is fifty-two thousand dollars, and I don't know how you take the clerk's responsibility and change it over that you're making them then a department director is what we're doing at a grade eleven, it becomes a department director, even if it's paid at fifty-two thousand dollars. And then if you look at all the other employees that's in the city, the public works and the police and even the fire, how are we gonna justify when we're talking probably next year, we're gonna try to give them a three percent raise, we gave them three percent? That's more than a three percent raise, and so it's kinda like, and I know good and well, if I ask, um, Captain come up here and say, has your job duties increased over the last year, the last two years, he's gonna say, yes, it has, and we haven't been able to do the same for that. So it's kinda unfair, in my opinion, for the rest of the employees to say, you know, we're gonna struggle next year to give you all a three percent, but the clerk in a couple of years is gonna be, go over to the, out of an elected position, is gonna get a huge pay increase. It just seems it's more about the greed of the situation than the need, so I am not in favor of it and I do not want to take the rights away. We are unique, and I know some people argue, oh, we're the only ones, maybe we should get away with it, but we're unique, that we have an opportunity to let the citizens still elect another position, that they can have a voice here and somebody that's representing them, not the administration, so, and it's another watchdog.
You know, Karen brings up a- a great point in terms of the quality of service that the office can provide, um, because that's really what we're out to do with this position, is make sure that we do have qualified personnel in that office. If we make this move, obviously, I- I didn't realize actually until, um, till this topic hit our table, that when someone is elected that is uncertified as a city attorney and working as, I'm sorry, not a city attorney, city clerk. I looked at you and I said that. But when you- when you're working and you're attaining that certification, you're looking at a three-year period to get that certification. So in reality, we could face seventy-five percent of an elected person's term with a person serving that's not certified to be in that position. When we make this an appointed position, we draft the job description. All of a sudden, from day one, that person is qualified and certified for that- for that job. I don't want to go three years waiting on someone to be qualified and certified for that position. I understand that there is a- that there's a, um, an idea that- that we would be taking the voice away from the people, but I also understand that having an individual in that office that knows that office and that knows that position is very valuable to the people that we serve. You know, we're- we're in a position now where the pay is- isn't what it should be, and as we pile on more work on that position, whether it's voluntary or not, we get to a position where we're not competitive in the marketplace. And if you're not competitive in the marketplace, you lose people, and in this case, it would be people not running for reelection. So we- so we have an elected official who we're not paying a competitive wage for the job that they're doing. Every four years, we could be electing someone new and taking three years to train that person to be certified. This- this, making this an appointed position to me makes a lot more sense than to continue to put that office in jeopardy every four years for someone who may or may not know what they're getting into. So I fully support making this an appointed position, I- I think it makes sense for the office, I think it makes sense for City Hall, but most of all, I think it makes sense for the people that that office serves over the long haul.
If I may, if I may say the opposite to your argument, which we could say opposites all night long, but as far as elected certification on us, we're not, the mayor's position is not, but you take this out of our realm here and take it over to the county. According to your theory on what you're saying, that the people are not qualified when they receive the job of the elected officials, then Rebecca Johnson, she had to learn after she got there. Almost all of the county positions, the PVA, he wasn't qualified when he first got there, he had to learn on the job and get qualified, Rebecca had to learn on a job. Every elected official, basically, once they're elected, has to learn on the job to be either- if they're certified or learn what they're doing, it happens as a part of it. So I don't think the city of Georgetown's ever been in jeopardy in the last, I mean, we've had a long, once you're clerk, you're kinda clerked as long as you want to, is kinda how our history has been, and our city's never been in jeopardy as the clerks have changed. They've all changed, they've all learned, they've all done a good job, and any elected- And any elected position has a somewhat of a green period that they have to learn, regardless whether it's here or whether it's over in the county positions over there as well. They have to learn. So just because you change up during an election doesn't mean the system falls apart with that. So.
I'm not implying that the system falls apart by any means. I, I was never implying that. What I'm saying is, if we lose a city attorney, and it's an appointed position, and we have a job description for that position, the transition's going to be a lot smoother to hire a person for that than bringing somebody who, who's never held a position before.
I don't, I don't agree with, I don't really agree with that.
Okay, any other comments? We can go back and forth on this.
Yeah, we can, can't we? How long we do it? No, I'm just kidding. Um, yeah, I hear the hypothetical a lot as far as like, well, you know, city clerk leaves office or loses the election. It's going to take three, three years, 75% of the next clerk's term to have them trained. But practical experience is, is that we've had only three city clerks in the last 40 years. Glenwood Williams, Sue Lewis, and El Tracy. By contrast, we've had, I think, seven or eight, seven city attorneys in the last eight years. By the way, viva Andrew, long live Andrew, city attorney forever.
He's young.
The point is, the point is, is that.
That's funny.
Elected office isn't, at least locally, it doesn't seem to be a lot of volatility. I mean, there is continuity, and certainly in the clerk's office, that's been the case. I don't usually listen, this is a bad thing to say, but it's not election year, so I'll go ahead and say it. I don't actually listen a lot to voters when they call me. I mean, I'll listen to what they have to say, but I don't like take a, take a tally and say, well, this person, there's so many people for this, on this issue, on this side, and so many on that side, so I'm going to go with the majority. I usually don't. But on this issue, we're talking about taking away the opportunity for the voters to vote to elect a city clerk. And that's a dangerous thing for an elected official to do to the voters, is to take away their right to vote on a given position. And if there was overwhelming support to make this appointed, I'd probably do it, because that's the will of the voter. When it came to abolishing the superintendent of public instruction, the railroad commissioners, that the state did. The way the Commonwealth did it is there is a constitutional amendment, and then it goes to a referendum to the voters. And that's how we got rid of the superintendent of public instruction and the railroad commissioners. In the same way, I know it's not practical to have a referendum as far as whether or not to make this appointed. But at the same time, if I'm getting about two to one phone calls, Mr. Singer, I like voting for the city clerk. I know we're the only one in the state, but I like being able to say it's somebody I know, somebody I supported, so I can go down there and feel like I have a better case when I deal with my property taxes, or something along those lines. Literally 70% of the contacts, whether it's somebody talking to me on the street, emailing me, texting me, giving me a phone call, what I read in the paper, they are for keeping this office elected. And it's really their choice for me to go in and go against their will and say, well, I think I need to take that away from you. I don't agree with that. We've done a lot as far as putting more on the office, but all offices have gotten more complicated. His job's gotten more complicated, our jobs have gotten more complicated as the city's gotten bigger and more populous. So I just don't see the arguments. I think there's a lot of stability already, and I think the voters know what they're doing. And I think we continue to throw it over to the voters until such a time as they come to us and say, we're done. We don't want to vote on it anymore. Make it appointed. So I'm going to vote no against this.
Mayor, I'll take a turn. I didn't, I didn't have an opinion, but just in rebuttal to Mr. Speaker.
Ah, sorry. I thought.
Yeah. He's calling you.
Speaking of city clerk duties, that'll be $15. My, my only thought on that is in, when we have a presidential election, we usually have a greater turnout regarding city council. It takes anywhere from about 7% to 9% of our population to elect city council, because we only have about a 12% to 14% turnout of our actual voter. So that's about all that counts.
If we had 75% in the last general, presidential election, and then we have usually about 40, 40 to 45% in the off-year election.
Of registered voters?
Of registered voters.
Nice guess. I may be missing four.
I think you are.
Could be.
Any other comment?
I'll just make one more quick comment. You know, Charlie Perkins used to say this, Mayor, and you probably remember this, he said, reasonable people sometimes can disagree, you know, on, on the same issue. And, and, you know, hearing Brad and Karen kind of banner a little bit, you know, I could, you know, that's a perfect scenario. I mean, this is one of those scenarios. Reasonable people can disagree. And I've talked to a lot of people about it. And, and I do like to, to hear the opinions of people. I, you know, I, I give that some merit and certainly some weight. One question I guess I do have for Stacy is, and, and I don't know if you can recall this, but what are the ranges on the grade 10? You know?
I definitely don't know those by heart.
You don't know that? Okay, all right.
No.
Well, that was something Megan and I had, had some conversation about, but I don't recall.
What, what is the question?
The, the, the pay ranges on a grade 10 versus a grade 11 versus a grade now? I know Karen was talking about a grade 11 or whatever, and.
The, the only comment I'll make to that is obviously when it comes to setting salary grade, that would be your all's decision.
Right.
Well, did I have it questioned? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I've questioned that. Why, and it's probably the same to you. Why was it presented to us then as a grade 11 to be a director?
I, I think that had to do with the wage survey from KLC.
So then it's going to be wage survey? And if this passes through, then probably that's going to be the same argument and support on it come after it's no longer an elected position then, if that's what it's based on. So we are looking at making the city clerk a grade 11.
That's up to you.
And that's the support, no, no, that was what is, the administration is supporting that.
That was sent out to you, yeah.
All right.
And it goes along with the rest of the directors we have.
So you're wanting the city clerk to become a director?
That.
You're wanting the city clerk to become a director?
Basically.
You are? And does that mean there will be a larger department than what's, what is now? When you have a director, what is, how, how is your plans then for to use a city clerk? What's making it a director's position? Because I understand how the other directors are, how they function and how they use, how, what is your plans of using that position as a director's position?
I hadn't really given it that much thought. I mean, she'll be continuing on doing what she's doing now. But she's doing things now that she's not being paid to do.
But you feel like she should be, that position should be paid in a director's position?
I do, I do, because the things that she does, if she only stuck, stuck to doing the statutory things, we'd be looking to hiring someone else anyway.
True, but up until maybe the alcohol, the list of things that's been done in the past, up until adding the alcohol to it, really pretty much, Mrs. Lewis, when she was here, she did, there's a few extra things, but basically she did that. From the time Ms. Glenwood was here, things have changed and the community has changed. But still, basically, there's not that much.
We're not looking at the same time period when you go back into those times.
Right. But for Sue, it's compatible, because that was just a few years ago for Ms. Lewis. But still, your recommendation is for the council to do a grade when it comes back, if this passes tonight and it comes back. Your recommendation from the administration already has been to do it at a grade 11.
I will, yes. But it's not my recommendation that makes the final decision. It's this body here, regardless of what my recommendation and what my feelings are. You make that decision, not me.
Let me ask you another question. When you make the recommendation of the pace, the pay scale, so if this council points, approves the pay scale of 11, and the salary is between the $52,000 to the $72,000 is where the salary would lay, what is your recommend, recommendation today to the council to pay?
I think if you look at all the people I hired, you'll see that they start out at the bottom of the grade.
All right. Are you, are you making the recommendation it's going to be $52,000?
I'm not making any recommendation right now.
Okay, all right. One, one no. Because I'm.
Regardless of what my recommendation would be, it's still a council's decision.
It is.
Karen, would you agree that, that the responsibilities have increased since Ms. Lewis was the clerk?
Slightly, but so has the pay is increasing because the automatic pay raises every year that come through the cost of living, cost of living. Now, would I like to say maybe a couple thousand dollars more? Yeah, but we're.
So we live from a, a city where you're collecting taxes on 20,000 residents versus 30,000? I mean, it's, it's increased by a third, and the ABC portion has that. I'm just, I, I, I'm not thinking of specific details. I don't have, I don't have a chain list of things.
Every, every person that works for the city of Georgetown has had to increase what they do to make the city function. And that has come along with everyone, even us. We do more than I did the last time we were on council, because there's more people to talk to, and more people that want to see us, and that type of thing as well. So everyone's doing more, kicking up more. Now, if I'd been sitting on the council at the time, no, I probably would not have put the ABC under, under that office. But outside of that, things are running similarly, the same as to what they were. Would I like to give a couple thousand dollars? Yes. But am I comfortable saying we're going to change this to, we're, we're taking the rights away from the voters to start with, even though you, you don't think a lot of vote? But those that do, we're taking that rights away. But on the flip side of it, I'm not comfortable of saying, okay, we're going to do this, and then we're going to turn around and support this with a pay that's going to be a grade 11 director. I don't think it qualifies for a grade 11 director, because if, you want to continue on with that.
Because they don't have people, or because they don't have responsibilities?
Well, then you look at the responsibilities. We've got the finance director, that's a grade 11. And then we got a city clerk that's a grade 11. I don't think both of them need to be a grade 11 on that.
That would still be the council's decision.
Yeah.
On where that pay scale goes.
But I have a strong suspicion with the recommendation coming out of the administration as a grade 11, have a strong recommend, I have a strong suspicion because of the recommendation the way it came, that that's probably what it's going to be. So.
Let me, I'll chime in just real quick. At this point, I'm not as much concerned about the salary, because I think when we discuss the salary, what we're going to have to do is the exact same thing that we did with the police department. When we, when we looked at the pay scale study, it was two years ago, maybe three years ago now, two years ago. And we realized that our police department didn't even make the chart on the state pay scale study that we got from KLC. We made an adjustment to that, because we kept losing employees over and over. This, I don't necessarily see this being any different than that. I think we have to look, and we've already been given quite a few pieces of information on other clerks, what their responsibilities are.
Two different sources.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean.
Traffic and, and Megan.
Right. So I mean, we, we have to look at that, and then we decide, is this a market level for this job, or is this not a market level for the job? I don't suspect that anybody's going to anticipate the mayor proposing $72,000 a year. And I wouldn't support that. However, I will support a market level for that job, because that's what we're, that's, that's what we owe our employees. We owe our employees a market level for the job that they, that they perform. If we get into it and we find out that, that for some reason it's on the opposite end of the scale, then we have to look at that as well. So I, to me, this is more about furring up the position rather than, and like I say, we're not going to look at the, the budgeting on this until the next fiscal year budget anyway.
Well, why, why can't we go ahead and address? I, I guess I want to ask that question, because Megan and I did have that specific conversation. Why could we not go ahead and address the, the, the pay grade in unison with, with the point?
I think, I agree with David on that one, at least, that it needs, if we're going to go that direction, and that it needs to be done. And on the, what you're talking about on the market level with the police, the police probably don't think they're still at market level.
They aren't.
But on the flip side of that, the way the, if you read, and I'm sure you have, that you read the job description, it limits, the job description is so limited, that there is only four people right now in, that I know of in this community that could even apply for that job the way it's written. So it's really written tight, that it's not going to be, we're talking about an open market to reach people, to fill the position. The job description's not written to open for a market like that. So go back and read the job description again. It's very limited, and you've only got four people that I know of in this community that could apply for that job based on how that job description is written.
We don't always hire from our community.
Well, let me see, if you only got four, a community of 30,000, 50,000 people, and we've only got four people that's qualified for it based on that job description?
What you said was, you only know four people who are qualified. Those are two very different things.
Okay, well, then there's maybe, but.
And since we changed the police scale, we have brought police officers from other cities who are already done with the academy, who are already trained, who, who now that we've changed that, they want to work for us, because they don't.
That's what you, that's what you limit this to, to having to bring somebody that's already worked in a city somewhere or the other. But just read it.
It lives, how does that limit it?
We're not going to change any minds, I don't think, at the rate we're going here. And I don't think that was the intent.
David had mentioned.
Not work?
Looking at the, the question of pay or the grade. I mean, if, if, if that's what he's, if I'm characterizing that correctly, I mean, it would be, it would be helpful at least go in clear-eyed as far as what this is.
Stacy, is that something that you have available tonight?
I'd have to go look at it. I'd have to go get it. It's, I think I can access HR for, if that's something the council is wanting.
Laura can get it for you.
Laura's also. Bring this, a copy of it for Kelly's bill.
I think you'd have more time to think about this if we put this off to another time.
Tracy? I have a one, I have one question for you. It's pretty cut and dry, and I can't remember, and I just, it's because I can't remember what you wrote in the memo to us. The additional responsibilities regarding the alcohol beverage control that we placed on you, how much of that time, how much of your time is taken up dealing with that?
I'd say it's 30%.
It's 30%? Okay.
But it's new still. You know, people come in and ask a lot of questions.
On the job description, it's 25% ABC administration.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, if that seems to be the sticking point as far as whether or not to make this appointed or elected, I mean, when we put that on, when we came up, when we did the alcohol ordinance back, what was it, last year, I guess, late last year? I mean, I, I think when we put that responsibility on the clerk's office, I didn't, at least myself, didn't perceive the, the consequence of this somehow becoming a push to make it an, an appointed office. So I mean, if, if that's a sticking point, I'd, I'd consider moving the responsibility somewhere else, if that's, if that's one of the sticking points we have in terms of, well, we've given her more responsibility, therefore we need to increase the pay, and in order to increase the pay, we've got to make it appointed. I mean, I just think it's kind of a big step to take as far as the voters, the tradition of, of the city, merely to make that one switch that an unforeseen consequence there are.
Mark, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying as well. I'm not, I'm not sure where, who you would shift that additional 30% onto, though. That's, I guess, my question. Who, who would you place that additional burden on?
Where do we put the restaurant? When, when it was just in restaurants, before package sales?
It was actually with, it was with finance, and, and then when we had a lady in finance and when we had to do away with the position, it actually went over to the mayor's assistant.
Like I said, that's a possibility. I mean, and I wouldn't say that if it wasn't for the gravity that I feel as far as what I'm hearing from the voters, as, as far as wanting to be able to continue to vote on this office.
Have others been getting phone calls?
I got many more about pigs and chickens.
Well, you know, Hamza.
Just saying.
That's the start.
Just were waiting to get the pay scale?
About a minute, Reese.
Is, is what we're adopting tonight, is the pay scale attached to that?
There was no intent to do that. The only intent tonight was to, yes, be, it would remain elected or we wanted to change it to an appointed.
David, are you hesitant to vote without that decision? Because we really, I don't, we can't make that decision tonight anyway, can we?
I, I understand that. I do understand that. I, I can understand the complexity of the whole situation. And I, and I feel like that, that's been a big issue. It, there's no question, that has been the issue. It's probably the white elephant in the room that everybody can see.
Because the paper, way it was quoted, that we were going to increase the salary to seventy-two thousand dollars.
And I just think it, from my personal perspective, I think it's more palatable if we do them together. And I can respect another opinion certainly on this, but for me, that, that makes it more palatable.
But can we? We can't set the pay grade tonight if, even if we wanted to, can we?
It wouldn't be binding. I mean, you could express the opinion, but, I mean, since it's free to be changed at the next budget.
We would have to change it via the budget ordinance or the personnel ordinance? Or, or both?
Both, it would be both.
So it would have to be drafted, read once, read twice, and then voted upon?
There, there would be no way to effectively condition the vote tonight on what that salary is going to be.
Okay.
While you're looking at this, can I have a, ask a couple of questions, please? One is, um, when they changed the chief of police from being elected to appointed, was that done by council vote or by voting of the public? Didn't they have answered that question?
It wasn't a public vote.
It wasn't, it wasn't, when you were talking about the referendum thing?
I don't know. I hope for my time.
That kind of, that kind of referendum isn't authorized in Kentucky, as far as I know. It would have to be specifically authorized, so I'm going to say no, it wasn't.
Well, they specifically authorized the vote to, to the county to be there. I mean, I'm sure there's.
Well, but that's, that's specifically authorized.
But they went through who to do that?
But you, the law in Kentucky is that you can't just have a referendum on any issue. The referendum issue itself has to be specifically authorized to be a referendum issue.
Specifically authorized.
The general assembly. So there's only, there's only a few and, and local option is one and, um, off, off the top of my head, that's really the only one I can think of. There are no, like in California, they can vote to legalize whatever. You can't do that in Kentucky locally or on the state level, only if the general assembly authorizes it.
Okay.
Mayor, I, I guess in looking at this, it, it does confirm, at least for me, my conversation with Megan, that the grade ten, at least in my opinion, was probably the appropriate grade and, and the one that I would support in making this transition. Now, as far as what Andrew says, that, you know, I, I understand we have to have a first and a second reading, change it ordinance. So I don't know how we want to address that, but I, I'll go ahead and at least state to the council and whomever else that that, that was my intent in moving forward with making this an appointed position.
Any other comment on that? So you said it's not binding, we don't need to do anything.
You can pass it, you can pass it tonight as is or you'd have to do, you'd have to do another ordinance. And the ordinance could only be binding as to, I mean, yeah, I mean, it could be, it'd be binding, it would be binding two years in advance, but, yeah. And you'd have to follow it up, of course, with your budget ordinance.
Anything else? Roll call vote.
No, you need a motion and a second.
I have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we've got a, you've got a motion in a second?
That's why we were just.
We do have.
Please restate what we're voting on.
Right. Pass the ordinance that's.
That part I got.
To be clear, we are not in any way voting on a pay grade for this position.
Not at all.
No budget allotment?
No.
I just, I feel the need to make that very plain and clear. We are not.
Voting on a ordinance that strikes through the portion that it says that it is elected and that is basically.
Exactly. No, no funding, no allocation, no pay grade, no raise.
Nothing.
Nothing.
This is simply dealing with whether we continue this position as an elected position or change it to an appointed position.
Andrew, what's the timeline? I know there, there's some timelines that are sensitive out there. What are, what is that most recent timeline?
Two hundred and forty days from the general election.
Which, what does that equate to?
November.
It's March.
It's March?
But you'd have to file.
Right. But one consideration is that, um, and, and one of the reasons we, we looked at doing it earlier is that because at a certain point, people can start filing for that office and they have to pay the fee to do so. If you go and legally, you can change it up until a certain point. But people start making plans and they, they go in to pay the fee. Now, I don't know if they can have that fee refunded or whatever, but the idea was to make it before people would start applying to run for offices.
Which technically that won't be until sometime early next year.
In the job.
Mm, it's, yeah, I think it's November. I think it's November, it's the end of November, yeah, the end of November.
Okay, my bad.
Yeah.
Proceed.
I mean, Mr. Showalter's got a question.
I'm sorry.
I know we're getting close to the deadline and obviously that, that start date or an effective date when people can start declaring is less than a month away. I would feel more comfortable, but again, I'm just one opinion, in setting the scale before we vote on this. Would we still have time to set that scale and then get back before that, that date where people can start declaring or?
They could declare no.
Because I know we've got one more meeting left this month. Is, is it November, is it the sixth or seventh of next month when people can start actually?
I haven't counted back. I know we're in the safe zone now. Where it's not going to conflict with anything.
Yeah. Again, I'm just one opinion. I mean, there's been very good arguments back and forth all night and we can continue this on our own.
Mayor, I, I mean, I think the direction I'm coming from as well.
I would feel more comfortable personally. Nobody has a degree. If we would set the scale first.
Or in conjunction with.
Putting, moving forward if that's what we decide to do. And I don't know if there's enough time to do that or how everybody else feels, so I just want to throw that out there.
Do we, being that we've had the first and second reading, do we have the option if we, well, I'm assuming that we do, if we can't come to an agreement on the pay scale, we can go back and, and deem this ordinance null and void, can we not?
Sure.
You can use that anytime, you can void it.
If you don't, I mean, it's null and void if you never vote on it, so.
But what I'm saying though is if we go on and vote on it.
Oh, oh, absolutely.
And then we can't, we can still come back and change it at any point in time.
As long as you change it sometime before the two hundred and forty days.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, Mark, you, your thinking is that you set the pay scale before people start filing for the office?
No, no, no. Wasn't there a comment made? I think Andrew made a comment that we want, if we're going to do this, that we need to do it before people start. If there's going to be one or more people decides they're going to run for this office, that we want to get this done before that happens?
You would do that tonight by changing whether it's an appointed or an elected position?
No, I, I completely understand that.
His question is whether if they, if they change it to include the salary and do two further readings with that included, whether we would still be meeting our goal of getting it done before the filing window opens? And I, I don't, I'm not positive what that window is. I just was advancing that point. I mean, theoretically you have until March, but you would, the point was that you would want to extend the people who might run for that office some courtesy of not taking that office away.
All right, but let's just say hypothetically, somebody did, somebody saw this, they saw your comments. What, what would happen? How would, what would be the protocol?
I don't know. You mean, as far as what they're entitled to?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So basically.
You'd have to ask the county clerk that or the, the board of elections, the state.
So basically, we want to hurry up, get this done, so we make sure that nobody in the public wants to run for a public office. So we're going to, we're going to knock them out of the chance of running for a public office.
I don't know.
I don't think we do.
I'm just.
I think we do.
Just making the comment.
Remember the seven city attorneys in last year?
I just want to say the opposite city attorney is no longer elected anywhere in the state, anywhere.
You can set the scale, Mark. I know, anytime, I know. You have plenty of time.
We have three city clerks in forty years, what year? What was the first year, Glenn Wood?
Yeah, we talked about this. So David, David would remember and Marvin would remember. We talked about this once before and the reason it didn't go through is because we had two young ladies that came in front of us and said, I'm running for city clerk. Neither one of them.
We went into the period where they could file, I remember that well. Ms, Ms. Glennwood decided that she would like to have it be appointed too late to have it appointed.
She asked to have it appointed.
Mm-hmm.
But she wouldn't run, but she wasn't running again, so the argument of what we've talked about wouldn't have, wouldn't have held out with her anyway, so. But yeah, I remember this before, before, so.
I called it the question. Sorry, all straight on the vote?
Vote.
He called the question.
Really?
Not really.
No.
I think he's calling the question, which saying is a motion and a second, he's asking for a vote. I'm not, not the best on Robert rules, isn't that what he's asking?
That's what it is.
You betcha.
Okay, let's have roll call vote, please. A yes vote is to change from an elected position to an appointed position.
So at this point, we can't ask Andrew any additional questions, is that right?
Right.
Can we vote on the question? I mean, can we vote as far as, what is cut off today? I mean, if there's reluctance among council members, and I'm speaking specifically to the issue of whether or not to call the question. I'm not, I'm not arguing anything regarding.
To call the question debatable? Gosh, I don't.
Of course, Robert.
Is it? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
But I mean, if there is still, if there are still council members who have concerns about going forward. I mean, is there a way to, to vote on the, whether or not?
He's going to look up the rule.
Your rule on Roberts.
Don't we have to vote to cut off discussion?
Just, just to vote as far as, is whether or not we can have a vote to continue discussion because I hear some, some concerns from council.
That's what I just did.
I think he's right. I mean, I think she's right too.
I think that.
Well, remember, I was the first one.
Right, it's a motion to cut off debate. Right, and then they have to vote on that question.
Obviously, Mark was the same.
All right.
You're voting on my call.
You want to have that motion?
Do you want to?
What, what are the rules regarding voting on the question as far as whether or not we're calling it, calling the question? I guess I should say, whether, you know, this is like, it's got my Star Trek. I mean, is this like the vote on the calling of the question?
This is voting on the call of the question.
On the call of the question, what are the rules? Is it just majority?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what's a yes vote signify?
Yes vote would change.
Yes vote signifies to end discussion.
And a no vote is to extend discussion.
Right, was to not call the question, to extend discussion.
All righty.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yes vote.
Did you get a second on your call?
Oh, yeah, did I get a mo, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miss.
I called it.
Yeah.
We might need a recess.
What's a yes for? To end it, no is not.
End discussion of vote.
Yes.
Cut off discussion.
This is just to cut off the discussion, okay?
So it's, it's opposite, right? Go ahead.
No is, no is to extend discussion.
Extend.
No is to extend.
Extend.
If you say no, you want to keep on discussing.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay? No means to continue. Mr. Showalter.
Yes. You want to talk about it anymore?
No.
Just say yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sains.
No. You want to talk about it? All night long, I could filibuster. Go ahead.
You've done a great job of that tonight.
That's right.
You really have. Go ahead.
Lesby.
No, I.
You want to talk about it?
Yeah.
Mrs. Tackett.
No.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes.
Mr. Singer.
No.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
If the no was hit.
You believe?
No.
So we continue discussion.
I believe you do, or you.
Okay, continue.
Okay.
I, I had, I, I'd heard some, some doubts about that side of the room or at least, you know, some concerns, so I'll turn it over to some of those who have doubts.
The only thing I'll say, I've said it before, is that I feel the two need to be linked together. You know, I've, I've taken my position on it, I support it. I think it needs to be a grade ten. I think that's more palatable to the community and I think it's well within the range that the mayor's asked for.
Well, I mean, you, you guys said it anyway, if you want to vote on this.
I know, I know, Mayor. I just, I just honestly, I think that they need to go together. That's just my, my opinion.
I haven't said anything tonight because I'm not supported it the whole time and Tracy knows that and it's not becoming as a shock. But the one thing that I do agree that should happen, that obviously can after discussion tonight, is that she is in well deserving of a raise because of taking on that added responsibility and you do do a good job. It's not anything personal at all. But I do, um, agree with what Marcus said and I've had that saying from people and I, I know when you look at percentages, um, Kelly, that it's not a huge percent, but even that small percent, the majority of one is important if they want to vote for something. You know, when I was listening to those numbers.
He said it was eighty-eight percent in neighborhoods like Bradford, Segway.
But, um, and I know change is hard, change is difficult and that might be what some of the voters are going through as far as that goes, you know? And I do acknowledge a lot of the things that Brad said makes a lot of sense and, and so does Karen's. And so, me as a voter, I've looked at it from that perspective and that's where my stance has been, no, I'm not really in favor of that. And when whoever the elected official was that ran for, they knew what that position was and how much that was going to be paid when they did it. But in saying not being able to do the raise, which I think Tracy's in deserving of, that we can't do that, that if we could link the pay raise or the pay grade with it, would definitely be more in favor of me to, to look at it, I don't like to, to see that happen. So that's where I'm at with it. That's why I voted no to the.
I, I think you can do that.
Sure. I, I, I don't know. I, I'll probably offend everybody that's ever been elected, but, uh, as far as, because I was not born and raised here, but I am one of the few who has been elected in the last eight or ten years. One of the very few who's not born and raised here. But because of some things I've done, I have name recognition. And, and I'm sorry to offend, but we are basically at the local level winning a popularity contest. That's just, I mean, that's just the way it is. That's the way I see it, that's the way it's turned out. Whether it's good or bad or indifferent, um, that's, I mean, that's just how it happens. So the city clerk's position is important. I don't cha, I don't think that changing it from an elected position, which is partially a popularity contest, based on name recognition and based on maybe the deeds of the person within the community, whether they've been here long enough to know, so that people know who they are when they actually put their pen or their finger in a voting booth. I, I don't think we're undoing the process or taking away from the voters the importance or the significance of the position. Because the state statute has statutory laws as to what type of training is required of a city clerk and the people in the city clerk's office. I guess, I guess my main justification of, of thinking that it's okay if it's an appointed position and that we can move to an appointed position is the fact that the rest of the state has done that. Um, we can continue to be unique, um, but we continue to be unique in such things as interlocal agreements, which make in some cases very little sense. So, I, I just feel like we can move forward and, and make this, uh, an appointed position, the responsibilities of which are absolutely as important as, uh, directors' level positions, where we have directors who have multiple, numerous employees and lots. It doesn't change the fact that the responsibilities are different. I mean, department to department, we're comparing not apples to oranges, but apples to pineapples. I mean, this is completely different as far as the responsibilities go, so. Move on.
I wasn't offended by that at all, Kelly.
Good.
Good point.
Okay, we're already, we ought to, should we put this in form of a motion, David, to what you would like to see happen?
Well, there may be a motion on the floor, but.
There is a motion on the floor.
If I were to make a motion, it would be to come back at the next meeting with the first reading. Second meeting of October, and then the first meeting in November, have the second reading, and go ahead and put the grade scale with the appointment. But we need to.
I'm not sure what the difference is. And I'm, I'm, I'm sitting from a practical standpoint. I'm trying to understand how, how rolling, and, and I'm, I agree with a grade ten. I'll say that. But I'm trying to understand how, from a practical standpoint, that's going to make a difference. It's going to be the same people making the same decision. You know what I'm saying? We're, we're not only going to have to set the, the pay grade, then we're going to have to budget. I mean, there, there's a whole process, I, I guess.
Okay, I'll, I'll answer your question.
Okay.
I know where you're coming from. Because to me, it, it, it makes it a little bit more transparent. And, right now, there's a perception that we're trying to get this rushed up and passed, and there's going to be this high grade, this high pay. And that's not the reality. And, and I know that, and, and you probably know that, but there's a perception of that. And, and I want to just, I just want to clear it. I want it to be totally transparent, and everybody know exactly what we're doing. And, and we still may not all agree with it, but at least in my mind, it, it, it confirms what I'm doing.
I agree with you on transparency. I have an issue with us governing on perception, because I don't think that's what we were voted to do. The perception can be.
All right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to offend you, I'm just saying.
I'm gonna leave it at this. To me, it's the right thing to do, and I'm just gonna leave it at that.
I have to agree, I have to agree now. I'm, I'm very much a skeptic of how all this came to pass, what was all behind the issue of it, and it has come to light that all that's behind the issue of changing this, this, has been about the money. That's, all the talk has been about it. Now, chances are, I'm probably still not going to vote, because I don't want to take the rights away from the people who have the opportunity to vote for another person in the city of Georgetown, but the bottom line is talk about transparency. It hasn't been very transparent. You and I even had to talk, and perception is a hundred percent of reality. I've learned that a whole lot. So if people are perceiving something is going on wrong, then maybe there's something going on the wrong. So, you know, it did, it hasn't been presented the correct way, it didn't come out the correct way, it ended up being all about the money, and that's what the whole conversation has been behind it. So if you're going to take a right away from the people, then you better make sure that you've got it clear as crystal as to why you're taking that right away from, what's behind it, and what's the outcome going to be about that. So, the people of this city deserve that. We're taking this so they never get to go in the boat, poll again, they never get to pull that lever for that person, whether some think they don't care, or they do care. But if you're going to do that, then it needs to be completely transparent, a hundred percent, across the board, what we're doing, what's going to be responsibility for it, what the pay is going to, what, what the responsibilities are going to be. The whole package needs to be laid out. Now, that's not to say, as Andrew said, that another council can change this, and another council can change that, but we're the ones that's doing the voting. We're the ones that has the legacy behind making a major change for the citizens of this community. If we're going to do it, then it needs to be transparent. Everything needs to be laid out on the table, whether you agree or you don't agree, so that the citizens out there see it all at the moment. We, we make that change for them and take their rights away from them. Now, I know through history, things don't get voted on like they used to, but we are making a historical vote and taking the rights away from some people. So if we're going to do that, then it needs to be laid out, lock, stock, and barrel, what it all entails, every single totterie bit of. And the mayor needs to answer how he's going to use that department, how he expects where it to be managed. He needs to answer that, too, because it may end up being a tie vote, and he may have to be the one to make the deciding tie, so he's going to have to answer for that. So every bit of it needs to be as transparent and as crystal clear, because I do not take it lightly, taking away a right from the citizens out there. So, I quit filibustering.
As great of a campaign speech as that was, we still have a job description that we've been presented with.
Which we've not talked about, and broken it down.
Read it.
And all of that needs to be done before the processes, that's part of what David's talking about. That needs to be, all of that needs to be done first and laid out, and then you can make an informed decision for the citizens about changing the position.
That's what we're elected to do, that's what we're elected to do for the citizens.
Mayor, is, is there a motion on it?
There is.
Is there a second on it?
There is.
And I, and I apologize.
When I called question once, we did that.
So we're still discussing.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I haven't said a lot for particular reasons, and some of you all know the reason I won't mention it. But, I agree with David, I think we need to bring it all back and let it be upfront. I think we need to set the grade scale, the whole works, before we vote on it.
I, I don't see what, we're, we're being non-transparent.
I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying that.
And you know what, Mayor? You're not being, but there, there's just some appearance and a perception, and that's all, I mean, that's just.
I think at this, at this point, there's no way we're going to make that decision and it not be transparent.
Mayor, I would make the recommendation that we do what David's talking about, as far as bringing everything up. This is the pay scale. This is the position description. And this is the question as far as whether to make it an appointed or elected, you thought at one point, simply to make it transparent. And I know, you know, in a perfect world, perception wouldn't be important, but in the fallen world of Georgetown, Kentucky, perception is important. And, that's just the way politics works, and that's the way the city administration and the city of Georgetown works. And, I just make that recommendation, that we bring it all together, we're clear-eyed about it, it's crystal clear and transparent. The question's going to be solved, the pay's going to be solved, and the position description altogether. And I think that's reasonable, I think that's a very reasonable step to make. I don't know if I'll vote for it, but I think I'd be a lot more comfortable if that's what, if that's what we were presented by the administration.
I, I mean, I concur with the recommendation, I'd second it. I mean, there is a motion on the floor, so we need to take some action on that. So either it needs to be withdrawn, or we need to go ahead and vote. Right, Andrew?
Two options, you can withdraw it, or you vote on it.
That's right.
I mean, ultimately, we're all on the, you know, same team, despite our various opinions, and I, I just want this administration and this council to be as transparent as possible. I mean, to have the perception of being transparent as possible there, so.
I think.
My concern.
By putting it in pieces, we were taking number one, we were either going, if, if it's voted down, I mean, it stops right there. But we have time later on to set the pay, and, and look at the job description. I think the main thing is whether or not it's going to be an elected or an appointed position. It's whatever the council, council's going to make the final decision on all of this.
Absolutely. I hate to interrupt you, but absolutely, I mean, if we decide to make it an appointed position tonight, then later, we are the body that's going to make the decision on the pay scale, we're going to make the decision on the job description. We're, I mean, the, we're on camera. This is, this is where it happens. I mean, we're talking about it, and this is where it happens. I missed one meeting, and, boy, it seems like I missed six months worth of meetings. But, I mean, if, if, if the, if there's a percent, I mean, it. This is a strange analogy, but it reminds me of when I lived abroad, and I had to accept the fact that there was a percentage of I had no idea what was going on around me, because it was another language and another culture. If there's a percentage of the population that never turns on this channel, or never comes to a city council meeting, I can't change that. You know, I can't change that. If you're concerned about the perception, or if you're worried or fearful of what's in the newspaper, you have to deal with that as an elected official. It doesn't concern me. Right? I'm already an elected official. I'm elected to make that decision, and the people that are tuned in, and the people that are interested in this, are paying attention. And I feel like we're going to make the decisions in an open meeting, so that the public is aware of it. And the public that's tuned in, and the public that's part, participating in the process, are understanding of it. I'd, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Karen, that it absolutely needs to be transparent. I don't feel like it's being rushed.
We never want to be anything but that.
But we're, we're the ones, we're the body that makes that decision. I mean, it sounds like a criticism of, of City Hall, that they're trying to push something on us.
And that's the way I'm taking it, that's for sure. When you are the final decision makers.
We've changed that process by having sponsors and by having those things on the agenda beforehand. That's something that, that you pushed for when you came on, and I absolutely understand the purpose behind it, is that it, this is not something that came up today at five thirty, and we're going to vote on it tonight at six o'clock. This is something that we've been discussing, and that we're going to add to, if, if it's changed, we'll make sure that we discuss what the, the pay scale is, or what the duties are, at a later time. So, I don't, I don't see the concern of that. If the, if you're fearful of the perception, or you're fearful of the press, then you need to get over it.
Well, I see this as one change, and believe you me, I've never been fearful of the press, or minded what I said becomes of the press. But, I will say one thing. I, if you make this change, this is one of those changes I think you're not going to be able to unmake. There are certain things that we pass an ordinance on it, and we can undo the ordinance. Uh, I think once this one's done, it's not something we're going to go back, and after we do other research, or look into other things, or whatever we talk about later, that we're going to go back and be able to undo it, once it's done. Um, so, you know, change in other ordinances, we can pass them.
Sure.
Two weeks later, go back and undo it. This one, once it's done, it's done, and that's it.
Sure. But how long do we want to lay it? From looking at the past video of the, the meeting I missed, and the notes, the minutes of the meetings I missed, and the discussions, when are we just going to make a decision? Are we just going to keep waiting until it's too late?
Well, I proposed at the next meeting, we have the first reading, in the first meeting of November, we have the second read. And we get it done.
What do we do with the motion that's on?
It has to be tabled if we go forward.
This needs to be.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
Has to be withdrawn. What do you want to decide to do? You're wasting an awful lot of energy here.
I think the writing's on the wall, so, we either vote, or somebody needs to withdraw their motion. I'm not sure who made it.
What is the motion?
I made it.
Captain Member Pan made the motion, Kelly seconded it.
That we vote on the issue?
Let's vote on the issue. If those who feel strongly enough that the pay scale should be attached, we're going to have a first reading at the next meeting. We can still have a first reading at the next meeting.
The result is the same either way. I mean, you've got to have, you've got to have two new, two new readings, if you're going to change it. The result is the same, whether it's a withdrawn or a voted, it's just.
I think we have the power to do it. Make, to, to make those changes, or discuss those things transparently in the future, like you, like you recommended.
I, I wish the, the, you know. This isn't the first time this has been brought up. We've, we've had the packet for several days now, and, and it frustrates me that we get down to the night of the vote, and then we need additional information, or we want something changed then, that we've had. You know, we discussed this, I think, a month ago. If the pay scale was an issue at that point, I'm not sure why we didn't go on and address it then. And like I say, if it's a, if it's a perception issue, because things that have been printed that were not accurate, I'm not, I'm not convinced that that's a reason to prolong a vote, or to prolong taking action on it. So, that's my two cents.
I'll let the council know now. I have no problem supporting a grade ten. None whatsoever.
Me neither.
But here again, it's, it's, it's not me, it's, it's you. Okay, roll call vote, to see whether we have a appointed position, or an elected position.
Mr. Lesby.
No.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sains.
No.
Mr. Showalter.
No.
Mr. Singer.
No.
Mrs. Tackett.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
So. Next item on the agenda, special events application. We're trying to come up with an application that we don't have any misunderstanding about whose responsibility for what when it comes to our special events. We want everyone who's involved to sign off on, on the application, so that we, we know what's going on, and we don't have any, any more misunderstandings.
Tracy, have you talked about this, or not?
Um, yeah. We came up with the application, and I've taken it in my office, and it's worked pretty well. Just to, we did the scary stories the other night.
Oh, that's good.
In the square, and, you know, we had to have public works involved in that, and an officer, just to get everything blocked off. We had to have public works bring a special, I don't know what it's called, something to, so they could plug in their microphone to, to the.
A jack?
Mm-mm, it's called something fancy, I don't know. Anyway, I copied them all on this, and everything went off without a hitch, as far as I know. Same for Second Sunday. Have a lot of street closings. We, I scanned it in, and Officer Whittaker and I worked on it together, and, you know, it just basically tells us what you need. If you need, you know, herbies, or if you need barricades, if you need police, if you need EMS may be available. So, it, for the four events I've used it with, I just wanted to experiment, it's worked really well.
The only thing I want to say is, the only thing sort of remotely of an issue in there is, we looked at some other cities the way they did theirs, and specifically Lexington, they use the same form for every event, regardless of what that event is, and they specifically require a million dollar liability policy for an event. Now, I, we, we've talked to our insurer about, on, on certain events, having that put in. So I actually put a provision there that every event would require a $500,000 policy. Obviously, you all are going to want to discuss that. I don't know, I mean, I think there are obviously some things that don't have, present a major liability. But anytime you shut down the street, or require police presence, I mean, what, what you're doing is you're, you're shifting the, the liability issue as much as possible to the, the folks who are running the event. I guess the problem, my, my difficulty is in finding some meaningful way to break it down to where such would be required, and where it's not required, and I would hate to have it something arbitrary. And I think Lexington ran on the same problem, which is why they just said it's applicable in every circumstance.
So if a, if a fraternity or sorority from Georgetown College wants to close off a street, have a 5K run, they have to actually have the liability insurance?
They would in Lexington. And, and I, I understand that.
All right.
Getting such is not necessarily a very expensive thing, it is an expense.
Yeah.
And I'm like, my, what I'm saying is, I don't think every event that, that would require this application would necessarily need that kind of liability policy, but how do you draw it in there such that you cover the ones that you do need it for, and don't cover the ones you don't need it for? It's tough.
Let me ask this question. I mean, could we, I mean, I know we have liability insurance, and I'm sure it covers us in situations just like this. So what we're wanting to do, though, is we're wanting additional liability insurance, that, that whoever's having the event. Would it be possible for us to actually obtain some other type of umbrella po, I don't even know if that's right terminology, but some type of a.
It would be, but, but what you're doing is you're making what's otherwise a private function, and you are giving the signal that you're treating it.
The city's going to cover it.
Subject to public liability, and that's, if you get sued, if somebody were to, to die, and you got sued, they're going to point to that policy and say, well, look, the city's treating this as a public event, because they requested it to be covered under their insurance.
So, if, if that, that, I'm using sororities and fraternities as an example, I mean, they have liability insurance as well. So they would need to call their insurance provider, and ask them to send over proof that, that they have that insurance.
Basically, yeah.
So that wouldn't necessarily be a new. So, there wouldn't necessarily be a new policy that they'd have to provide.
Correct. Most organizations that are gonna come to the council to ask to have the street shut down are already gonna have an existing policy. If a nonprofit forms to, for the sole purpose of running a 5K, well, there's the possibility that they don't have that. But the bottom line is, they really need to have something like that for their own safety.
And like you say, it's not a significant expense for a one-day event.
For a one-day event, I mean, I think it can run anywhere in the neighborhood of $200 to $500 for a $500,000 liability. It's not super expensive for something like that.
Less than that even.
Less than that, it's possible.
Yeah, we used to buy it for a reunion, it was like $180 bucks.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're asking and I do support it, I guess. Even though I've said I'd like to make things smoother and easier for people to do business with the city and, you know, all of our different departments.
It's not an easy sell, I know it isn't. It's just, it's important that the city requires this, in my mind, simply to reinforce the fact that the city is not, while they're offering their support by police presence and help with trash and things like that, that we're not accepting the full liability. Even though we have a waiver of liability, honestly, sometimes that only gets you so far and...
Will that lower our premium by any chance if we do this?
It's possible. We hadn't explored that, but it's possible. I don't, I wouldn't even begin to answer that, to know I answered that question.
I mean, I bet it'd be worth asking. So, what do we need to do?
Are we creating another position in a special events coordinator? Just wondering. Because it clearly states special events coordinator.
Does it state that?
Yes, it clearly states that.
We need to fix that, that was, that's a holdover. All right, we'll take that out.
No? My address, you guys, real quick. In some capacity, you guys are already, sorry. In some capacity, the city is kind of already doing that with Parks and Recreation. Any program that is held within a city or a county park, we do require them that million-dollar policy. And basically, all it is is something as simple as them contacting their insurance provider, stating how much coverage they need and listing us as additional insured on their policy. So, typically, if they're gonna be something that's a nonprofit or they're someone who's already familiar with doing these things, they already have that liability insurance for special events on their own anyway. And, you know, certainly sororities and those individuals who are used to doing those events would as well. But in some form, we've already got that established with the city through Parks and Recreation, at least with the parks, that is already being handled with our department in that.
So, some people are already accustomed to it, if they're with it.
Yeah, because anytime they do anything within the park, they are required to show that liability insurance that it's a special event within the park. They have to show that and provide that to us.
So, with that being said, what do you want to, do you need to make some changes into your form and bring it back to us?
I can, I mean, we're not, we're really, I don't even, if we had a resolution or anything drafted out, we're really just bringing it for discussion and short of you all to give your tacit nod to it. I mean, it's a...
Is the clerk's office already handling special events? And I'm not saying that as a prod, I'm seriously asking.
I don't think there is a uniform, that's sort of the purpose of this, is there really isn't a uniform procedure that people follow. Sometimes they come to council and it initiates right here. Sometimes they call up to the mayor's office, sometimes they call Tracy. It doesn't really ever get directed through a particular channel and that's half the idea of this.
If you remember, a month ago, we had a little mishap, actually two, and we promised to come up with a form that would make it more streamlined and would, you know, when the road closes. And so, I write down that the road closes at 5:30, it doesn't get to close at 2:30 or 3:30. It gets to close at 5:30, and we're all on the same page now.
We had miscommunication and we said we were busy coming up with the form and try to head this off in the future.
HGI has liability insurance for that.
Is that what you're wanting? I'll make a motion for approval. Second.
Ask a question. So, when this is filled out, Tracy, and when this event comes up and says like that person's gonna be on the agenda to ask for that road closure, whatever, would we get a copy of this?
Yes, that is my ultimate goal, is to have that in your packet so you'll know about it. Like the man, Mr. Schindler, that came tonight.
Yes.
He doesn't know about the special event form, because you really, I've been using it, like I said, in an experiment. I called the lady at the library and said, "Tell me about scary stories," and I filled out the form for her. I called Connie Mench and I said, "Tell me all about Second Sunday, everything that you need."
Okay, sounds good. I'll second it.
Any other comments? All in favor, aye?
I'd imagine so.
Opposed?
Give a second.
What did we just do?
Mr. Engineer!
What did we just do?
We didn't do anything.
Okay. Abstained.
You abstained, Matt?
All right, we have a lot of municipal orders coming from the engineer's department.
Evening, Mayor, Council. First item on the agenda is approving a streetlight for Elm Street. Scott County Schools called me and told me that there's a section of Elm Street where they pick up a number of children, it gets really dark in the morning, and they are requesting a streetlight. It would be mounted on a business pole, standard streetlight, and about $4 a month.
An order approving a streetlight request for Elm Street and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas the Scott County School District has requested a streetlight and whereas the school bus stop on Elm Street near North Hamilton Street has limited pickup and drop-off visibility and whereas the city engineer and Kentucky Utilities have determined a new streetlight is feasible. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the installation of one new streetlight at the bus stop on Elm Street is approved and that the mayor has authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Tackett? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item. Go ahead.
The Traffic Committee is recommending to install two no-parking-this-side-of-street signs on Ely Alley. This section of Ely Alley comes off of West College Street. It's a small stub that does not pass through to the other section of Ely Alley. And a resident who lives over there called and complained that they could not access their property because cars parking on the street, which is a city street.
This is a recommendation from the Traffic Committee.
An order approving no-parking signs on Ely Alley and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas a resident has requested no-parking signs on Ely Alley and whereas Ely Alley is a city street and when vehicles are parked on the section of Ely Alley that enters West College Street, access becomes restricted. And whereas the city engineer and the traffic committee have determined no-parking signs are feasible. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the installation of no-parking signs on the section of Ely Alley that enters West College Street is approved and that the mayor has authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Okay, a quick question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Have the homeowners in that area been notified or have we discussed this with them?
No, just the one complaint, and there's really, the street actually only accesses one property.
One property.
Everybody else is along West College Street.
The only reason I ask that is because we've done some things in the past and it's upset the street, and the next thing, you know, you have a room full of people in there, in here complaining to us.
Right.
And I just wanted to make sure that...
They're denying that person to access the property.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, with that, can you just call the police and have it, have the car removed?
It's a city street where there's no parking sign.
If it's blocking access to someone's property, though, is that violation of where a car can park regardless whether there's no parking or not?
Not if he's on a public street.
It is a safety issue too for any kind of fire truck or anything coming down there too with parking with the road stop. And it's just, it's just a nub. It's not... So, there's nobody living on there but her or but the person that complained? Those cars were parked in her way then?
Along that street, there's a couple of vending machines.
Oh, okay.
Trucks that park.
Motion.
Second. Second. Any further comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Municipal order approving a request for parking spaces on East Washington Street.
As you can see, this is a recommendation from Traffic Committee. This was discussed at two separate meetings. Russell Miller, business owner that owns the Harley, not Harley, the motorcycle shop down there on Washington Street, was requesting that parking stalls be installed on East Washington Street in front of his business. Currently, there is a handicaps sign there and the curbs are painted yellow. When you head east past North Court Street, there is parking on that side of the street. Part of the concern was sight distance when you're pulling out of North Court Street onto Washington. Right now, you typically have to look through the side of a building. If there's a car parked there or a parking stall there with no car there, you're gonna have more sight visibility as the car, oncoming traffic, has to be further away from the curb. So, it will, in fact, increase sight distance.
Yeah, is it two stalls? Is it one stall or two?
I did not, I did not count yet. It will be between two and three stalls.
Question, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, did you read that, Tracy? I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
An order authorizing a request for parking spaces on East Washington Street and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas a business has requested that on-street parking spaces be installed on the south side of East Washington Street between North Broadway Street and North Court Street and whereas East Washington Street is a city street and parking already exists on East Washington Street on the south side to the east of North Court Street and whereas the city engineer and the traffic committee have determined that on-street parking in the area is feasible. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the installation of parking spaces on the south side of East Washington Street from North Broadway Street to North Court Street is approved and that the mayor has authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Honey, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Are we doing this just because there's parking on the other side of that? Is that the issue? Because I drive down through there quite often and it's, when you get cars lined up both ways, there's not a lot of room at all.
Right.
So, I mean, is it a situation where, I know there's different classifications for streets and number of cars and all that?
It meets the cross-section width for parking on that side of the street.
Okay.
Second.
Motion? We need a second. Second, by Miss Sames. Any further comments?
I disagree with the Traffic Committee. Pulling out of there, I just, I don't, I barely like the spots there at the county attorney's office on the other side. It's just as, you put that closer to the state road and people pulling out of the convenience store. I guess, like you said, it fits with whatever the requirements are. I don't know the technical terms.
Cross-section.
The cross-section, it may fit with that, but I wouldn't like it.
Well, you got a lot of people that turn out of the Fast Max that go the opposite direction down towards the county attorney's office too. And when you've got cars, if you've got cars lined there on that side and they're trying to come out this way and someone's coming out from across the street, that's, I just can't see how that's not gonna create a mess.
You actually have more visibility because that car's on the opposite side of the street. It's the car, the car that will have the least amount of visibility would be the car on the same side of the street as North Court Street when you're pulling out. So, if a car's pulling out of Fast Max, you're gonna be able to see them even sooner.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily the car that I'm concerned about. The car that I'm concerned about is the car coming off Broadway.
Right. And I'm saying, instead of having to nose out and look through the side of a building, if you nose out and you have extra space to nose out because there's a parking stall there and people don't drive through parking stalls, or if there's a car there, a car, you're gonna be able to see through a lot better than you will the side of a building.
You're also coming up a little slant there, too.
Which levels out as you get farther out.
Any other comments?
They know there's parking lot behind us.
All the parking spots we can get.
Anytime you install them, you're getting a plus. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two opposed. All right. Municipal order approving a no-parking-to-corner sign on Glory Coach Place.
Glory Coach Place comes out of Stables 2 onto Champion Way. A member of the HOA there gave me a call and commented that there is a resident or two that parks their cars on the outbound lane coming out Glory Coach to Champion Way, too close to the island there. There's an island that separates right out and right out. So, makes it difficult for cars to get through that side of the island and proceed out. So, it's more of a safety concern.
Did you talk to the other, some of the other residents?
I did not, but I've seen it.
This will be one of the people here.
What?
I think it's in front of this guy's residence, his house.
It's the opposite side of the street of the resident's house. There's no houses on that side.
Where there's a thing, they have a thing.
Agreed.
An order approving a no-parking-to-corner sign on Glory Coach Place and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas a resident has requested a no-parking-to-corner sign on Glory Coach Place and whereas Glory Coach Place is a city street and when vehicles park near the curb island prior to exiting on to Champion Way, access becomes restricted. And whereas the city engineer and the traffic committee have determined that a no-parking-to-corner sign is feasible. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the installation of a no-parking-to-corner sign on Glory Coach Place is approved and that the mayor has authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is just a safety issue. Simple as that.
Yeah. And Mayor, what Karen and I both have said, and I'm sure others have experienced it, there was a time where we were doing quite a bit of this, where we were eliminating parking on one side of the street or another, and we just, we caught a lot of flak. I mean, it was one of those situations where you had people that were adamant on both sides of the issue. So, we're probably both a little guarded. I'm a little guarded with it.
Well, there's only houses on one side of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, on this one.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm just counting for future reference, maybe.
So, don't wait long, house on both sides of the street is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Lots of future...
Item F.
We do.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Municipal order approving no-parking on the west side of Chambers Avenue from Bourbon Street to East Main Street.
This is also a Traffic Committee recommendation. This has been on our agenda for probably longer than I've been here. If you've driven down Chambers before, the street width, the cross-section width is only 29 feet wide, which does not, in our current subdivision regs, allow parking on both sides of the street. Because when you have parking on both sides of the street, in essence, you have a single through lane and cars either have to wait for others to pass through and if you have a fire truck that needs to get through, it'll be a problem. The other thing that we were really considering was when the police station goes in there, if approved, police vehicles will be leaving, going up Chambers to Main probably most of the time. So, that right side heading towards Main, which is the west side, would be the side to remove parking. Currently, from Bourbon to Washington, there are two no-parking-this-side-of-street signs. At the end of the street, there's only two residences and someone does park in front of their house there. When you cross over Washington, as you know, there's residences all the way up to Main. The fire hydrants are on the east side, which would be the opposite side of the street. The fire department typically wants to have no-parking-this-side-of-street on the side that the fire hydrants are. However, the hydrants are on the far corner of Washington and Chambers and then Chambers and Main. So, all that the fire department would be requesting is 20 foot from the corner.
And take it one step further, we looked at the houses there with the parking issue and they have driveways and garages.
An order approving no-parking on the west side of Chambers Avenue from Bourbon Street to Main Street and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas the exiting-on-street parking situation on Chambers Avenue prohibits emergency vehicle access and whereas Chambers Avenue is a 20... access, and whereas Chambers Avenue is a twenty-nine-foot wide street, and when vehicles park on both sides of the road, access becomes restricted, and whereas the city engineer and the traffic committee have determined that no parking this side of the street signs on the western side are feasible. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the installation of no parking this side of the street signs on the west side of Chambers Avenue from Bourbon Street to East Main Street is approved and that the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna end up voting no on this, and it's not because I disagree with any of your argument, because all your argument is correct, but with an old street, you can't put new regulations on an old street. This is what David and I were talking about. We've gone through exactly this, Marvin was around, exactly this, and we took no parking off on one side. It was a disaster. So with it being an old street, I can't support the recommendation, but I understand your argument.
Well, my main argument is emergency vehicle access.
Mm-hmm. Which if you start it, David and I can attest that you start it, you go through half of the streets of this community and they, you'll have to clean them off. And that's, well, we tried once before and that didn't go as far as we had hoped, so.
Yeah. And then the other thing the fire department said is, we're gonna get through that street. We might damage somebody's car, but we're gonna get through that street, so.
Yep, we do.
Slow down and they sacrifice response time and...
That new truck, we don't want to scratch it.
Exactly. When you have vehicles going both ways and parking on both sides, it's said somebody has to get over to let you go through, so.
Yes.
You know.
That happened.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll say.
Any further comment?
I'd say, I'd say if you vote for this, you'd be for putting it to the police department on Bourbon Street, but that's irrelevant. Go ahead.
Go ahead and throw it up.
Just a reminder, we're talking about emergency vehicles.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'll say no.
We got three opposed.
We got three.
Three.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, should I request a little break?
Why you?
What, you ain't got no more parking signs go up?
I can find one.
Let's put this up at the engineer.
Sure.
You got two items.
Okay, my bad.
Christian Avenue update?
At one of the previous council meetings, a woman came in requesting to have the availability to close Christian Avenue, I believe it was, near Harmony, Harmony?
Yes.
That section of Christian Ave is not a city street. It is platted, it's on their property of Harmony Church. However, there is an access easement. I did not go in so far as to go check on the easement and see who's, who has that right to that access, but I would assume it's the storage area and probably some other buildings along that secondary street just south of Southgate.
Find the Pioneer Plaza access?
Yeah, exactly.
So you can't close it?
Well, that would be up to them. It'd be a private matter.
So they would have to get the permission of those on the other street to close it then?
Yes.
So we couldn't, we didn't make any.
Do you contact, who follows that? Were you following them or how's that?
I...
To let them know or?
I don't even know who she was.
I'll contact her under who she was.
Was it Harmony or PCA?
It's PCA.
PCA.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, an update on the garden?
You go in, was it about a month ago, we received three sealed bids from three separate contractors. The lowest bidder was forty grand over our budget. Our budget was a hundred and twenty thousand minus ten for the architect, well, ninety-six hundred for the architect. So right now, we are in competitive negotiations with the three contractors, and we have asked them and the architect to help value engineer the project to try and eliminate everything that isn't needed to obtain a certificate of occupancy, and we'll see what we're making of.
Any idea when that should be?
We are, I should've gotten lists, I should get lists tomorrow. I've already gotten two.
Do you leave that information by next council meeting?
Well, we're gonna have a meeting and then it depends on when we can set the meeting with the contractors and the architect.
Whatever decisions are made, get it out to the council.
Yep.
You know in advance. Okay, let's take five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very well. Thanks for coming back with finance.
Thank you, Brian.
Makes me wanna shout.
See you later.
So basically, a grant accepting a $200,000 grant that we received from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, $100,000 to each entity. And I know Andrew's got a little more background on exactly why they gave us the money.
Yeah, I'll give you some, I'll give you a little bit of background. As I understand it, the, the construction on the highway, on the bypass, the folks at the federal level determined that it had an environmental impact essentially on a historic district. And so they allocated $100,000 each to the two historic properties that they felt were at least most affected by that, that area. So we're bringing before you the contract. Let's see, which one are we, we're on the resolution to accept the grant, we've sort of got two steps in this one. The, the state is still finalizing whether they'll approve the scopes of work. You should have both of those in your packet. What else? What am I forgetting?
This actually, Andrew, if I can, this actually started back when, when I was mayor.
It's been going awhile, we're just trying to make sure we've got the resolutions on file, because we...
And it, it started way back then, and that was even before, that was even when the city still had Cardone fully in its possession. And the judge and I met with the Transportation Department, and they were mitigating, a lot of it had to do with some rock walls and things that they were having to, to go through. And so the value of that, that they were giving over to the county, and the judge and I kind of agreed to split that with Cardone and with Ward Hall. So it's taken that long, because that was almost six years ago, really. So it's taken that long to get to, get to this point. And at the time, the, why the roof was on here was at the time, that was one of the things that I had, the city thought it had the biggest need was the roof at Cardone. I think Mr. Cassidy could probably agree with that.
He'll agree, he'll agree.
So what is the scope of work? I mean, I know the roof, what else?
For Cardone, it's just the roof, it's just roof repair.
Give like $90,000, okay.
It is, it is, and that'll just make repairs.
Resolution is accepting grant.
Fix it, and then replace it.
Let's deal with that first, because next thing we have approval of the contract on Cardone. You need to read.
No, I'll do it.
You need a motion?
Motion in second.
Motion.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. I say.
I'm sorry, I thought we said it was second.
That's alright.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now it goes down to the municipal order approving contract for Cardone.
And I think, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he rewrote this while I was out this week to, to think contingent upon KYTC's approval of, of the scope of work.
What happened was, we, we thought we had had everything finalized, so we went to RFP on the, the roof work. And then we found out from the state, we hadn't got it under contract. So we're, we're asking the council to approve the award of the RFP for the design, but contingent upon the cabinet approving the scope of work and the contract, which they tell me will be forthcoming.
Does it have to be written? Yeah. An order approving an agreement with Fitzsimmons Office of Architecture Incorporated for Design Services for Roof Repairs at Cardone and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the City of Georgetown issued a request for proposals for design services for Cardone Roof Repairs. And whereas the City of Georgetown has received a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to fund a project specifically for Cardone. And whereas the cabinet is reviewing the scope of work for the project. And whereas Fitzsimmons Office of Architecture Incorporated provided the highest scored qualifications-based services proposal. And the parties have negotiated the terms of contract. And whereas the parties have agreed upon a $10,000 fee for design services and reimbursable direct costs as outlined in the negotiated contract. And whereas the fee for additional services as outlined in the contract will be negotiated in advance of said services and approved by the City of Georgetown. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the contract between the City and Fitzsimmons Office of Architecture Incorporated, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, is approved contingent upon the cabinet's approval of the scope of work and grant agreement, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion.
Motion, aye. Second.
Second.
I have a few questions, Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is the roof, is the roof, I guess, the most pressing problem out there, as far as the roof, room number one, major? Yeah, they'd be fine.
Yeah, there, I mean, the roof work has been, you know, ongoing, I guess, quite, quite, quite a long time. I mean, there have been a variety of different issues. There was some, there was some damage from storm about a year and a half ago that insurance covered some work, and when we had them out there, we went ahead and paid for some additional repair work on a few of the valleys. There were so many cables on the building, and that's basically what's, what's happened. But we have probably three or four right now that are pretty critical. I mean, in the sense that, you know, we're noticing some real damage to some of the decorative plaster things that would just be incredibly difficult to replace and fix. So when this came up, and certainly we heard about it whatever, a year and a half ago, or maybe even two years ago, once it, all of a sudden, it's like, okay, now it's happening, which was the end of the spring, beginning of the summer, there was just no question, we didn't have to think twice, I mean, we knew what we needed to do. And, you know, any time that, that any delay that's gone in just kind of does a little more damage here and there. So, and, and what we don't know is, we just truly don't know the scope in sense of what can be done for that amount of money. And even the architect doesn't know that for sure, that's why they want to go out and get some proposals, take a look at a variety of different ways, how many people want to put new, any new shingles in those areas, or whether they want to try to reuse shingles and, and just do under, you know, the underlayment. We're, we're just not sure. But we, we feel like the amount, we, we've done about almost two-thirds of the gutter work, that we've replaced that, just with aluminum gutter, but...
Out of your own, out of your own capital investment?
Not long actually after we had the, the other work that we did as part of the, on, on top of the repair work that came in the insurance plan. So, you know, we've been trying to do it in a piecemeal fashion, and we've had some luck, but there's still plenty of places where...
Is it coming out of your fundraising, or is that?
Yeah, just out of our general operation, we don't, you know, we don't have a divvied up any other...
Divvied up, okay. So all the, so the rental income goes, I mean, the rental income after it pays for the operations, it goes into the general, general fund as well, it all goes in?
Anything else? You have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay. Next item is resolution accepting grant for recycling.
This is a $16,000 grant with a 25% match, so $4,000. It is for a baler, and I spoke with Terry, and he said this should be income matched, so, he said the labor for installation and everything. I do show it in the budget amendment first, so you can transfer it to...
And if you'll notice that, I signed off on that in, back in June, thinking that everything had been okayed by the council, we found out that it hasn't, so to be transparent, I'm bringing it back before the council to get your approval on.
Of course, it still had to be bid and everything, since it's over $10,000 unless it's under contract, so...
No actions ever been taken.
Nothing, nothing has been spent, no funds have been received.
We appreciate you bringing it back, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, my pleasure, believe me.
Well, this was during budget cycling time, so we were kind of tied up, you know.
It ended up in my tree and...
You need to read it?
No.
Motion.
Motion in seconds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. Okay. Resolution accepting the grant for KIA South Sewer Extension.
I think this is another one, this has been in the works for awhile.
Need to give a little background on that?
A million seventy-five thousand, Andrew's been to a couple meetings even at the state level.
Yeah, I'll give a little background. Well, the important thing for you all to know is that we can call this a grant all we want, but what it really is, is a, is a legislative line item. Our, our legislator determined that they wanted that money to go to that project, a certain piece of the funding from the budget to that project. They just happen to make, want to go through the City of Georgetown. So, there have been numerous discussions at the state level. We've met with folks from, obviously with the county, and folks with the, I forget the name of the state cabinet we've met with now, the folks over water quality, and, and legislators, and they all want, they all want something to be done. But the, the point of us accepting this is essentially to lock in that funding. The state law, the state budget law says that all, all funds that are not under contract will lapse unless reauthorized. So we're, we essentially are, would be accepting this grant, but I don't think that we're by any means saying that we are definitely going to spend it on that particular project. I mean, I know it's, it's a bit of a controversial topic. All I'm saying is that they've requested that we essentially lock that in. There are other funding opportunities out there. That, that project down there at the south of Scott County, the, the, yeah, package treatment plant project was ranked either number one or number two. I believe it was number one in the state's list of, of highest priority projects. It has been for a long time, and it is dumping water directly into our freshwater source. But there's a whole lot of other details that have to be worked out, who's responsible for what. Like I said, the point of me bringing this here was, you know, often we would, when I was back at DLG, which is KIA, it's the same agency basically, we would say to folks, you know, you're in danger of losing this unless you get it under contract. So that's essentially why we're bringing it. I know there's real opportunity for multiple levels of discussion about this, and that's all I have to say.
So what do we need to do then? You need to go ahead?
Authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement, that's basically what.
Is there a resolution?
Do you need a motion without reading it?
Need a motion on it.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. We've discussed this for good gravy, how many years?
Quite a few.
Cornette was in here, and he talked tests showing how bad the water was, and... Am I mistaken, or, or, maybe I was dreaming, this was probably true. Didn't we receive something from the county or for the reservoir money?
That's this money.
That's this money right here, that's it, okay, so, that's where it came from, it was...
We, we almost lost it completely.
Okay, so that's the reservoir money they were going to receive, and now that's out, this is coming to this.
That's it.
There you go.
Our legislators went to bed course and got, got it switched over so that we can use it on this project.
Right, right, okay.
Which is neat, because our water supply is being affected.
Yes.
Definitely. So we have a...
Second. Yeah, first and second.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a couple things, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't really crazy about this project, but when the money got taken from the reservoir and put more directly on this project, even though I'm not absolutely sure how, it's affecting Kane Run Creek, that's for sure. It's running, it's definitely affecting Kane Run, and there's probably some residual impact onto our aquifer. The main pro, the main pause I have is recently Planning and Zoning has approved putting a business, specifically Bevins Farm Machinery, whatever it's called, on the south end and on that corridor, and putting it right in our, in our green belt. And I just have to say, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I just have to say that's a pretty big decision. And running a sewer line up through there, and being forced to run a sewer line the way we're having to run it, rather than running a sewer line over to the pack, over to the sewer treatment at the horse park, or having the county step up and do something about it, is a pretty big precedent to set. It's a lot bigger precedent that's going to be set if the fiscal court approves that zone change. But there is nothing more vital to the identity of the city of Georgetown than that green belt between Lexington and Georgetown. If you don't believe me, drive down US 27 south from Lexington, and try to figure out where Lexington ends and Nicholasville begins.
Yep.
That's right.
And it is a miserable traffic experience, it destroys the spirit of your town and your city. And if you want to be Georgia at Lexington north, go ahead and vote for that zone change. That said, I think in terms of trying to protect our water supply, this is what we've been forced into by the state, certainly, certainly a little bit by the fiscal court, and also by the treatment plan owners out there, I'll vote yes on this tonight.
Mark, how did the fiscal court force this in?
Well, I don't know, David, it seems to be a county issue, because those pot, those trailer parks seem to be out in the county. So if anybody had any...
I'm running for county.
Well, it's one of those issues, it's one of those issues where I don't quite understand how it's the responsibility of the city to step up.
Well...
We'll step up, we always do, but I don't quite understand why it's that responsible.
You know, if, if, I mean, for the county, they, they had to agree to transfer the million dollars from, from the reservoir to go towards this project. Not only that, the water company will be the beneficiaries of the customer base that's going to be out there. And if it's affecting Kane Run, it's affecting, or it's impacting Elkhorn as well. So I mean, there's, there's, it's a pretty broad spectrum. I think you and I both agree on, on a lot of this, but anyway...
Well, who connects on to that sewer is still determined by this body?
Whether or not we stay by the green belt, whether or not we... What we voted on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, the green belt is imperative, there's no question about that, we totally agree on that. Just the shot at the fiscal court, I don't quite get.
Can I just make one comment about the environmental side of this? EPA recently approved a TMDL, a total maximum daily load for fecal coliform for Kane Run, which means every stream has a primary and secondary use or contact. So like swimming, fishing, eating fish. So based off of those, there's a certain amount of loadings for each type of pollutant that would sustain those activities. Fecal coliform is way above that, so that's why they have a TMDL on it. The TMDL, since the EPA regulates MS4s, which we are, part of our watershed drains to Kane Run. So the EPA, since they just approved the TMDL, I'm in talks right now with our water, our stormwater consultant to find out exactly what Kentucky Division of Water is going to require of us to reduce our input on Kane Run and fecal coliform. So this project would impact and help us.
Absolutely. It runs downstream. Literally.
Absolutely, I mean, I think, keeping, you know, Kane Run, trying to keep Kane Run clean and Elkhorn, but our water supply comes from the aquifer. And I don't remember, of course, it's anecdotal when I say I don't remember, but I don't remember the spring ever being shut down because of biotic material getting into the spring, that is coliform or whatever bacteria. But the spring has been shut down before by substances that are, that are associated with human development, like gasoline, for example. We have shut down the spring for ice melt, for ice melt goes, the ice melt level's getting too high in the spring. We've shut it down, had to buy our water from Frankfurt and Kentucky American. And the only reason you got ice melt is if you've got asphalt, you want to get ice off of. So that's the concern I have as far as more development going over that, on that green belt affecting the aquifer, going right on top of the aquifer.
Well, that's why there's such a big issue of the stockyard that is going to go right up on top of that area, see? I mean...
You're right, I'd forgotten.
Remember that one?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
And that was shut down, why? Because of the stuff running downstream.
Mr. Mayor, isn't there anything, let ask Pat to come up and say something about the issue?
She's been talking at the bits over here, I'm telling you.
My honor, Tracy, I attended the fiscal court meeting when this was discussed. And to address your problem, one of the things they're talking about is that the sewer line will not be large enough to carry a commercial load. They want it to be a smaller one, to only deal with what's out there now. To sort of shut down that idea of there being development. Now, I know they recommended it, now what happens with it probably will be up to Georgetown, will be up to Georgetown for this water sewer. But I know the county is also very aware of it.
He's going to answer right now.
They were very aware of it in, in terms of not opening that to development, although P&amp;Z did approve a recent development out there, so I don't worry. But I thought I'd pass that on, they were trying to preserve that green quarter as well.
I think they will.
Bob, enlighten us.
What's up, Bob?
A couple things, I was on the committee with P&amp;Z that worked on that green belt program, and I want to say I wholeheartedly support keeping separation between Georgetown and Lacy, and keeping that as green as we can. The second thing is, if we build that sewer line, if we find another $2 million, that build it, we are only building it to address an issue down there. We are not trying to push growth down US 25, okay? That's all it's for, we want to address the issue that exists.
Thank you, Bob.
Good deal, appreciate that.
I have a motion in a second now, if I can make that.
Karen?
Open the door, open the door.
What's that?
Nothing.
Why don't you keep talking, Stacy?
Any more questions for me?
It's getting late night, huh?
So we just need to make a motion for this?
We'll have a motion in a second for the resolution. I haven't read, yeah, the resolution.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Steve, now you can...
No, she's moving, Steve, she's moving.
No, I just, that's why, I saw you pointing at him, that's why I was...
Pat, what you...
Well, we let one, we got a little...
Are you, Steve?
I, I appreciate you letting me speak, I appreciate you letting anybody come up here and speak, I was trying to be as brief as I can. I've got a letter on my desk for Attorney Hartley, the, the letters addressed to the Health Department of Scott County. I, I wrote them, told them about seven years ago, that I, explained to them that I compost septic waste above ground, and, and the city attorney, your, your colleague, Patsy Jacobs, came to my place and saw, and, and actually touched, and, and, and inhaled. And she said, I don't find any problem with that, and Jesse Jones, the code officer, was with her. And I'm saying, I have written letters to, to, what I'm trying to say is that the way, the best way to deal with septic waste is to keep it in a dry medium, like earth or wood ashes, and, and, and then compost it, mix, you can mix it with leaf mold, or you can put it right in the ground, either way, it will decompose before it becomes a, a hazard to the water table. And, and the idea of wet flush toilet, you should, I just said to Marvin a while ago, he said the state is pushing us this way. You should talk back to the state and tell them to consider composting toilets for the, for everyone.
That's a good idea, you get looking for it, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, municipal order approving contract for the center of town.
Just bringing this back after the last meeting, I think there was a request for some additional information, and you've all received that now, you received two letters, I think one from Parks and Rec Board Vice Chair, one from the chair, as well as some information on the programs that are expected to be housed in the center of town when and if renovations are completed. Then you received some information that Ms. Tackett had requested previously to finance comedian at meeting, and again in the last meeting, that I was able to get on the approximate cost of demolition, which was around $70,000.
Plus hauling off, plus, that was 70,000 plus...
Seventy was for demo and hauling off, and then if, depending on what other occurrences might come up, there could be additional cost, but that was the base estimate. Now that you've had that information.
An order approving an agreement with Fitzsimmons Office of Architecture Incorporated for Architectural Services for Renovations of the Center of Town and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the City of Georgetown issued a request for qualifications for design services for Center of Town renovations. And whereas Fitzsimmons Office of Architecture, Inc., provided the highest scored qualifications-based services proposals, and the parties have negotiated the terms of contract. And whereas the parties have agreed upon $5,000 fee for basic services as outlined in the negotiated contract. And whereas the fee for additional services as outlined in the contract will be negotiated in advance of said services and approved by the City of Georgetown. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the contract between the City and Fitzsimmons Office of Architecture Incorporated, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, is approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Second? Second down here.
I got it.
This is just going to, this is just going to, to guarantee, to put together some sort of scope of work, and how much it's going to cost?
Yes, this is called a conditions assessment report, will come up with some basics plans and a cost estimate. I'm getting it up to code in occupancy.
I second, somebody else has.
He did.
A bit marking.
It has been seconded. Any comments?
The, will this take, talking about getting it up to code, this is, everything inside that building will be up to code?
That's the plan.
That's what I'm saying, we're not going to, nothing will be skipped.
No, no. No.
Okay.
That's the whole point of this, that's why we went beyond, at your request, beyond just an electrical engineer. That's why we're having an architect.
He will know what it's going to take to put it back to where it belongs.
We want to know what every penny it's going to cost to get it back to where it's going to be.
He will be looking at not just electrical, but everything.
AC, the whole works, everything.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, they see first read of a budget amendment ordinance sponsored by Mr. Lozdi in this time.
I'll give a brief description of what we're doing here before Tracy reads the ordinance. But basically, this budget amendment addresses three things, as we mentioned at the last meeting, the establishment of the alcohol fund, moving the alcohol fund revenue and related expenses to its own fund. So we're establishing that, it will add the three grants that you have just approved resolutions on into the budget. And then it will also, since we approved the new medical plan, the 9102... since we approved the new medical plan, the 9102, assess what 90% of our premiums is, because that's what we'll be writing the bill on. And we were able to save across all funds, $43,254, $39,589 on the general fund. And again, we do still have to set aside that money, but that will come from cash reserves. So, this is a reduction of just the expense for what we write a check for.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. Whereas the annual budget adopted by the city council on July 2nd, 2013, and amended on August 26, 2013, needs to be amended. Now, therefore, be ordained by the city council of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Summary, ordinance 13-017 is amended as follows. General Fund, alcohol regulatory fees are decreased by $380,000. Intergovernmental revenues are decreased by $2,669. General government expenditures are decreased by $1,639. City council expenditures are decreased by $924. City clerk expenditures are decreased by $22,154. Police department expenditures are decreased by $364,930. Public work expenditures are decreased by $4,771. Fire department expenditures are decreased by $19,833. Building inspection expenditures are decreased by $2,802. Dispatch telecommunication expenditures are decreased by $2,536. Transfers in are increased by $3,811. Environmental Services Fund, prior year revenues are decreased by $292.50. Intergovernmental revenues are decreased by $292.50. Sanitation expenditures are decreased by $2,703. Recycling expenditures are decreased by $585. Alcohol Fund, new fund, alcohol regulatory fees are increased by $380,000. Police department expenditures are increased by $354,404. Fire department expenditures are increased by $1,471. Building inspection expenditures are increased by $2,054. City clerk expenditures are increased by $22,071. Cemetery Fund, intergovernmental revenues are decreased by $188.50. Transfers in are decreased by $188.50. Cemetery expenditures are decreased by $377. Grants Fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by $1,291,000. Transfers in are increased by $4,000. Recycling expenditures are increased by $20,000. Community service expenditures are increased by $200,000. Capital expenditures are increased by $1,075,000. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Publicly introduced and read for the first time October 14th, 2013.
First reading. Okay, police update. Mr. Swanigan, Captain.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Boss, he couldn't be here, but he asked, I speak to you tonight about, there was an article in the news graphic that highlighted our new all-terrain vehicle that the police department acquired. And I want to make sure there's no misconceptions about that. Those vehicles were acquired 100%, no cost to any taxpayer to the city of Georgetown. We did not spend any money for those vehicles. They come from the military, and we participated in that program for a number of years, went back several years. Right now, we have five Humvees and one all-terrain vehicle, and we also acquired three Connex boxes or storage containers. We have one very large one at the police department and two that are kept at the firing range. The vehicles did not cost us anything, but the storage boxes did cost $200 for the cost of shipping them here. And we're utilizing those to store necessary items at the range, and also, at the main police department, we keep our lawnmower and other items that we didn't have storage for at the building. But the Humvees are more or less just for preparedness. There's been several occasions over the years where we've needed four-wheel drive vehicles, and we didn't have access to them. I think the citizens of Georgetown expect us to be able to get to them in the snow and inclement weather, and we now have the ability to do that.
That's great.
100% tax-free, no cost to us. They're gassed up, ready to go to the police department. They're not being utilized daily. They're there just in case we need them at the ready.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment? Kind of, I mean, I wouldn't have said this otherwise, but kind of tying with what you're saying. Typically, every year, we look at buying new vehicles for the police department. And many years ago, as most of you know, we had Toyota Camrys as part of our fleet, and we haven't done that for a while. And I know that there were some reasons to do it and some reasons not to do it, but in having some conversations with some folks at Toyota, from what I understand now, that maybe the vehicles are more accommodating for some uses with our police department. And I would like for us to look into, I would like for us to take a serious look at that during our next purchase cycle. And I'm not sure exactly when that's going to be.
Well, he'll tell you his next budget.
Well, and I don't know what preparation needs to be done. And I'm not saying 100%, but, you know, a certain percent. I think, I think it reflects well on the community. When people see that Toyota Camry, and I think it shows support to Toyota as well. But what I was going to say is, I drove to Florida this past week, and I saw all kinds of police vehicles that you're just not accustomed to seeing. Everything from Suburbans to Mustangs, even a red Corvette with Kentucky State Trooper on it. I swear to God, that's my pulled over. So, you know, it was not. It was actually, it was on I-75, but you would think it would be in Bowling Green, but it was on I-75. So, anyway, with all that being the case, I think that it's more than appropriate for us to revisit that, Mayor. And I'd like for you to kind of head that up and support that effort.
Robert, you'll take as many as they want to give you, won't you?
Absolutely. We'd be glad to test drive anything they want to give us. In the past, David, it was, it was an issue with the size of the vehicle. We could not fit a cage and a prisoner and items like that. But they've greatly increased the size. The Avalon is massive on the interior. And we would love to look at those, but it's just, it's been a matter of cost. Between getting those outfitted in the Crown Victorias or the Interceptors now, it's been, it's been a huge, huge difference in price.
I think the mayor, mayor has meetings every so often. Could you maybe bring that up and say, hey, we'd like to-
Oh, they'd be glad to hear that.
Give it some consideration? Maybe it's, maybe it's a few, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. We'd take whatever they give us.
Is there any municipality that-
I'm not saying, I think we need to go into it to understand.
That's not what I heard.
Well, yeah, we'd love it, but-
When we had the Camrys in the past, I mean, that was a huge selling point for our city. And the people up, I mean, they had them, they were striped up, they had the light bars on them, and it just, it looked good for the community. I agree 100%.
We'll, we'll talk.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
I have one.
Okay.
I just want to brag on our police department during the Festival of the Horse. It was brought to my attention that there was a shoplifter that went to one of the stores when they were getting ready about to close down. In a matter of 15 minutes, they had her apprehended and jailed. And I think that's pretty awesome. And plus, there was also some video surveillance that's probably going to be available for the other merchants. We have to watch out for that. But I thought it was pretty good, and that they needed that. Kudos. Thank you.
It's all business, and we greatly appreciate it. Because if that happens to any time, we'll be out of business. So, thanks to Georgetown Police Department. It's the quickest thing I've ever seen happen. They had to resolve Rocky and Jackson stores, so we do appreciate it.
That was on Saturday night. The officers did an amazing job on Saturday. I mean, the decision was made to shut the festival down, and it was absolutely a downpour. And the officers, the officers put their raincoats on, put their hats on, and went all the way up and down the street, developed a plan to get the vendors in and out as quickly as possible, safely as possible. And nobody stayed until it was, you know, everybody stayed until, you know, the job was done, right there in the rain. They did a great job. They really, really did.
We're proud of them.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Mr. Penn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?